Good evening. I'm Carolyn Wright, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this 25th day of January 2022. Pursuant to the school board's reopening plan adopted August 10th of this year and the school board vote on August 24th regarding health protocols for school board meetings, it's determined physical distancing will be used in chambers as a health mitigation strategy. Members of the public, as always, will be able to observe this meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. We welcome everyone joining us in person this evening and those who are viewing public as well. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please note who's in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in school board chambers is Chair Wright, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems. And attending via Zoom is Ms. Melnick and Ms. Felton.
Thank you. And for the record, Ms. Melnick is Zooming in for health reasons, and Mrs. Felton is in Richmond representing us in all the districts in the Tidewater region in our capacity as Tidewater VSBA Chair in Richmond today in this evening. So would you please, all present now, join me in a moment of silence? And please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, there are no recognitions this evening, so that leads us to adoption of the agenda. Any modifications? Hearing none. A motion to approve, Mrs. Riggs, and a second, Mrs. Franklin. All in favor, please show a raised hand.
Ms. Felton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have unanimous vote. The adoption of the agenda did pass.
Thank you. The next superintendent report is due at our next meeting, so that leads us...
Madam Chair, we do have superintendent's reports.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. So here are just a few items of interest for you and for our families to know. First, just a reminder to families and staff that February 1st is a staff day, so there won't be any school for students. Additionally, when students return on February 2nd, that will be the beginning of their second semester. Throughout January, we've been able to recognize our principals and our student activity coordinators. You know, in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, we are very fortunate to have over 80 distinguished school principals and directors in support of education in our 86 schools and centers. This group of staff works tirelessly to ensure that more than 5,000 school staff and 65,000 children are provided with a new learning environment each day that's safe, loving, supportive, and caring, all while cultivating incredible learning experiences. So thank you so much for an amazing job. Well done. Also this month, we honor our student activity coordinators. I think we all know these staff members serve as liaisons for various athletic and academic teams, clubs, and special interest groups, and that their important work ensures well-rounded programs are offered to the entire student body. I hope we all know how hard they work. They're always in our buildings, and they work incredibly hard. And for all of this and more, we offer our gratitude for what they do. So if you haven't had an opportunity to thank these individuals, it is not too late. When you see these outstanding staff members, say thanks. Or you can send a card or share a shout-out on social media acknowledging the hard work of your principals and student activities coordinators every single day using the hashtag #WeAreVB schools. This year's Division-Wide United Campaign wrapped up late in late December. Through all of the trials and tribulations of the past two years, the caring and compassion felt by our students and staff, I have to say, never ceases to amaze me. And I'm really proud to tell you all that our division raised $148,614 for the United Way this year. These donations went to a variety of nonprofits close to the hearts of our community. In fact, more than $80,000 of those donations were allocated to six designations, which included the United Way Community Care Fund, which disperses money to local nonprofits and is used for needs-based situations, as well as emergencies like floods, fires, and, yes, even a pandemic. The other top designations were our own Virginia Beach Education Foundation, the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia, the Children's Hospitals of the King's Daughters, the Virginia Beach SPCA, and the American Cancer Society's South Atlantic Division. And so, we want to make sure we thank all of the generous folks in our schools and on our staff who made that possible. Additionally, if you didn't yet have time to make a donation and still wanted to do so, you can email mary.norton@vbschools.com for available options and assistance. And from the bottom of my heart again, I want to give thanks to everyone who donated time and money and energy to this worthwhile partnership. And finally, earlier this month, our diversity, our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion hosted the 14th Annual African-American Male Summit. This event is our school division's male leadership empowerment summit, open to all male students in grades 6 through 12. This year's theme was "Portraits of Success: Living Out My Worth." Students, staff, and families participated in a hybrid summit, which allowed both face-to-face and virtual engagement options. And I have to say, we were very thankful to have Dr. Micolah Abdullah, President of Virginia State University, as the event's keynote speaker. Hundreds of participants were able to engage in breakout sessions focused on academic excellence, team building, and leadership development. And there were also sessions for parents to learn about division initiatives, community resources, and available opportunities for them and for their children. So if any of our students have not attended previously, I hope they will join us next year. This event is filled with hope and excitement, gratitude, and leadership. And I know I, for one, am thankful to be a part of it each and every year. Thank you again to our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and all the staff members who made this event successful for our students. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. All right, now we will address approval of the meeting minutes from our January 11th organizational and regular school board meeting. Any modifications to these minutes? Right, hearing none. A motion to approve, Mrs. Hughes, and a second, Mrs. Manning. And so, all in favor, kindly show a raised hand for those who are present.
Ms. Felton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have unanimous vote. The minutes did pass.
Thank you. All right, public comments. The school board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K to 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the school board and school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. Persons not called to the podium to address the board are reminded to be respectful of speakers so that the school board and persons observing the meeting are able to hear and observe each one's comments. Speakers signed up to speak will be called up at three at a time. We ask that you line up when your name is first called, and anyone outside chambers will be brought into the hallway. In-person speakers will be called first, followed by student speakers participating through Zoom or by telephone. After the student speakers, in-person speakers will be called, followed by speakers participating through Zoom or telephone. We ask that you begin speaking once your name is called, and as a reminder, you have three minutes to present, and will be offered a 30-minute reminder before time expires. We ask that you refer, you're free to refer to the online tracker to keep track of your time. Once your time has expired, kindly leave the podium to allow the next speaker to begin. If a speaker is not present when called to speak, or is not online when called to speak, the school board, at our sole discretion, may allow the speaker to speak at the end of the public comments section. And in accordance with newly amended bylaws, we will suspend, we will suspend, if necessary, public comments at 8:00 PM to hold the information session of the meeting agenda, and we will then return to public comments prior to the consent and action sessions of the meeting. As always, we invite the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. So with that, Madam Speaker, would you please introduce the first speaker of the evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first student speakers will be Natalie Rash, Jules Owen, and Roland Riley.
Welcome.
Hello again. My name is Natalie, and I would like to talk about my great day mask-free today. I didn't get a nosebleed today, and I probably won't anymore since I can be mask-free now. I wasn't hot and sweaty all day and could talk to my friends normally. I played and hung out with both of my friends that wore masks and did not wear a mask, and they were not afraid of me or my other mask-free friends. Everything was normal, and no one cared about who was in a mask or not. Hopefully, my nose acne will go away now that I can be mask-free. Today was the best day in the last two years of going to school. Thank you.
Please, next speaker.
Our next speaker is Jules Owen, then Roland Riley, then Ally Anthony.
Welcome.
My name is Jules Owen. I have been gladly today to not wear a face mask today. I was happy for my friends to wear free face masks. I could finally see their smile. I could finally breathe without wearing a face mask. For after two years, I was happy. But when I was on the bus, it was still okay because we have some people that still don't wear their face masks on the bus. Thank you for letting the people that let us don't wear face masks. Thank you.
Our next speaker.
A kind reminder to our audience to please refrain, just so we can keep this moving along. Thank you. Okay, welcome.
Our next speaker is Roland Riley, and then Ally Anthony.
My name is Rowan Riley, and I'm a freshman at Kellum High School. Today was my first day back without being forced to wear a mask since the seventh grade, and it was definitely a better experience for me as well as my friends. Masks have caused many problems for children my age, older, and younger. Masks prevent easy socialization, and it promotes us to isolate ourselves, which is not healthy for students of any ages. Being able to see my peers' faces makes school genuinely better. Considering that today was my first time I'd seen many of my peers' faces in almost five months, I think it's absurd that you're thinking of changing it back and keeping us all in masks when you aren't the ones to have to attend school for seven hours daily and constantly be reminded to keep your mask on when it's been proven that only a properly fitted N95 mask is capable of preventing the virus. So it should be a choice. We are not asking you to force anyone out of masks or make anyone do anything that causes them to feel forced. We are simply asking that you give us a choice to wear or not to wear a mask. America is all about freedom, so why should mine be taken away because of everyone that's scared? Are you saying that my opinion has any less value than theirs? I just want to be able to breathe freely and see my friends' faces at school. So all I ask of you is please leave it as it is and give our parents and us students a choice. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ally Anthony.
Before I start, I just want to say I think we should wear masks to keep everyone safe, including students, staff, and the family members at home who could actually be at risk. Hello, my name is Ally Anthony. I'm a sophomore at Kellum High School. This year, I took AP European History, and for this class, we read a 40-page chapter and take notes on it on our own, and we have a test on it in two weeks. With the four-by-four schedule, I would have to do this in one week, along with all of my other classes. The schedule is supposed to prepare us for college, but instead, you are pushing us way too far. A lot of the kids don't even want to go to college. College classes are two to three times a week. High school is five days a week. For my AP History class, I get three to four assignments a day. Most of the time, I don't even get 20 minutes to work on it in class. But with the four-by-four schedule, they would have to be turned in the very next day. There's a chance for these classes to be all year. What about study block? Yes, there's kids who take two of them and are in the easiest classes possible. What about the kids who take hard classes? Study block is the time we can retake and take tests or even get help. We already don't have one lunch. I have a friend who wants to take five AP classes next year, and you're saying that because of this new schedule, we can't even have a class tail-bet with our work? Next year, I want to take AP Chemistry, Advanced Fashion Marketing, AP Calculus, AP Lang, AP US History, and then Interior Design, and now I have to take another class, all because people in higher ranks want to change things up to something they think will better kids, but instead will make things worse? You're not asking what we want. You're making decisions for us. What if you have all your hard classes one semester and all your easy classes the other? So the thing to do would be to try and change it, right? Except last year, the majority of the people I talked to weren't able to make a change. Exams and SWLs are at the end of the year, so if you have to take it your second semester, you're fine. But all your hard work put in the first semester would just be lost because kids will be focusing on classes in the second semester instead of trying to remember everything from the first. College students get a final exam at the end of their classes, but for us, it would have been at the end of the year. So you're not only putting a bunch more work on the kids, but also on the people who make the schedule. So really, what is wrong with the schedule now? Do you like the four-by-four schedule?
No.
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 No. No.
No.
No. No.
No. No. No.
No. No.
No. No.
No. No. No.
No.
Why don't you like the four-by-four schedule? I think that although the four-by-four schedule can give us a little more condensed class load and let us focus on just a few things at a time, it does give AP students a disadvantage when exams come around. Having a whole semester between when you take a class and when you take the final exam can really have a negative impact.
30 seconds?
They're not on a four-by-four because while teachers teach Russian four-by-four, they give you homework every night, and not everyone has time to do homework every night. I asked over 40 kids, and they all answered the same way. I asked more kids in class, and they all answered the same way. No one wants to do the four-by-four schedule. It's just more work on the kids. So I really ask you, please, to think about the kids and the situation. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're going to move on to our online student speakers. First speaker is Emma Pyle. Please unmute. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Emma Pyle, and I think that students should have to wear masks in school because as a student, I feel that today seeing half my class unmasked was very harmful to me, and I just felt like freaking out, and I just went out of panic. Because I feel like this COVID is going in a way. When we're going down, the numbers are going down, and people are more careless. But then the numbers go up, but then they go down again because people are more careful. And no one's really making any sense to me. Because as a student, I feel that some people have their own opinions, and some people disagree with them. But I think that the best thing for everyone is that we should wear masks. Because everyone wants this COVID to just go away. So if we want it to go away, then why are we being that careless to being allowed to take our masks off in school? And on your school. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bria Eggers. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Bria Eggers, please unmute. We'll see if she comes on later. We'll move on to the next speaker, Jana Saltesiak. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Hello. As you may know, I am Jana Saltesiak. When I was three, I got swine flu. I soon recovered from the illness, but 10 years later, after many tests, was diagnosed with baculupsy, which was caused by my swine flu. That short-term disease gave me a lifelong disability. Because of it, I have to take summer school to have enough time to rest during schooling. There are already cases of people developing disabilities after COVID infections. How many other students will have to face what I do? How willing are you to have their consciousness weighed down by the COVID cases that could have been prevented by masking in schools? People claim it is their right to not have their children masked in schools. What about my right to have safe environments to learn, to feel safe in school, to not have my narcolepsy be made worse by COVID? And why is it that students can go around without masks in school, putting others' health at risk, but God forbid we show our belly buttons without getting detention? And what about our teachers' rights to a safe work environment? So many have been driven away by COVID and the workload it's caused. And you are combating this by giving middle school teachers an extra class? It seems like half my English class was unmasked, which is a risk to everyone in school. By the end of this year, will we even have any teachers left to learn from? And I also have something to read from Ava, a student from Salem High School, who says, "Despite the fact that today is only the first day of the lifted mask mandate in VBCPS, I already feel unsafe in my own school. Walking through the halls and classes, it is nearly impossible to social distance three feet away from others. That, on top of some students choosing not to wear a mask, COVID cases are bound to rise in the district due to easier transmission of bacteria. As someone who has tested positive for COVID in the past, I understand the effects that it has on your body. No one should have to go through that. I, among many others, believe that it is unfair to be put at risk to a deadly virus. I understand that rules are put in place as part of the mitigation process, but there are individuals that choose not to follow them. On the bus this morning, there were countless students not wearing their masks. The drivers did not say anything. By bringing back the mask mandate, students can be held accountable for putting up such risks. I go to school to learn. I shouldn't have to be scared to learn. Thank you. And thank you for listening."
Madam Chair, our online speaker number two is no longer there, so we move on to our in-person speakers. First, we have Kathleen Slindy, Dawn Human, and Amber Thompson.
And welcome.
There we go. Sorry. Can I start again? Good evening, Chairwoman Wright, Vice Chair Melnick, Dr. Spence, and school board members. My name is Kathleen Slindy. As President of the VDA, I would like to convey our disappointment in this board's decision to put the health and safety of educators and students in jeopardy by repealing the mask requirement in our schools during your last meeting. We are disappointed because in making that decision, this board voted to act against your own policy, which was previously to follow the science in making decisions around COVID. There has been no change in the science showing masking to be the single most effective COVID mitigation strategy in the classroom, so educators can only assume this decision was made for political rather than safety reasons. I heard from many of the educational support professionals and teachers after your decision, and believe me, I get it. It was definitely a no-win. There are people on both sides of it. That said, the decision to allow parents to opt their child out of wearing a mask, thereby removing the most effective mitigation to stop transmission of COVID, placed students, parents, and educators in physical and emotional turmoil again. So we interjected fear and anxiety back into our schools. For what purpose? It certainly had nothing to do with teaching or learning. Your employees, bus drivers, teachers, guidance counselors, cafeteria staff, custodians, teachers assistants, administrators, and all our substitutes from the community and our central support staff were all left holding the bag, trying to support students who come to school, a place where it is supposed to feel safe to learn. And to reiterate, VBCPS had a plan. It followed science and Virginia law that told us to use the CDC guidelines. It looked at local data, and it kept our schools open. It provided more stability and structure than we had had in the previous year and a half. The need to pivot was not there. Allowing political pressure to decide what we would do in our community was not the right thing to do. The job of a school board, according to the National School Board Association, is to advocate for equity and excellence in public education through school board leadership, not through a political agenda. Educators like the rest of the world would love to go back to normal. We're tired of this pandemic rollercoaster ride, too. But in the meantime, those educators and school employees who want to have a voice in the decisions that affect their working conditions and their students' learning conditions can join the VDA and its members as we continue to organize for collective bargaining. It is evident that no one else is coming to save public education. We are going to have to do it ourselves.
Our next speaker is Dawn Human, then Amber Thompson, and Kathleen Brown. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Human. I'm a high school math teacher. Again, I thank you for serving your community in this capacity and for making difficult decisions. As I said before, I do not envy you. There is no way to make everyone happy, and I feel the constant mask debate has kept us from having meaningful conversations. As an active, engaged member of the Education Association, colleagues often ask me questions like, "Do you think the school board knows XYZ?" My response is typically, "No, the school board probably does not know XYZ." I remind them that this board is like a captain of a ship. A captain does not know everything that goes on in his ship. He does not know the details and challenges that a cook faces while preparing meals for 5,000 sailors, or the details and challenges faced by the propulsion plant mechanics as they try to fix a broken reactor. The captain is only as good as the information he gets from his officers and crew. You, as a board, do not know the needs and challenges of your employees unless they tell you. You do not know the nuances and benefits of a program unless docile gives you such information. In short, you only know what you are told. Therefore, it is important that you hear from all stakeholders on issues that affect our schools. The working conditions of your employees are the learning conditions of your students. Collective bargaining allows those of us who work in schools to have input into what our working conditions look like. Class size, effective use of planning time, and school calendars are all topics of interest to employees and students. Collective bargaining will give the crew members of this ship a real voice in making change to improve working and learning conditions. In that vein, I'd like to add to the four-by-four presentation that you were given during last meeting's information portion, since tonight, the four-by-four is on the action agenda. My school held staff information sessions just last week. How are stakeholders supposed to ask questions and express concerns when such an initiative is being fast-tracked? I am not opposed to change. I want to be sure that before you vote to change in the high school schedule, you have all the information you need to make an informed decision. Next year, all teachers will be using the Canvas platform. This is, again, more change for teachers to learn and use. Lessons and assessments in Schoology do not transfer over to Canvas with the push of a button. In talking with my math coordinator, I learned it is taking him one and a half minutes to change one question from Schoology to Canvas. The work I provided for the asynchronous learning day had 30 questions. That is 45 minutes to change from one platform to another. When next year will I have time to convert everything from Schoology to Canvas? My point is, next year's teachers will be learning Canvas and adjusting to a new schedule. Do we need this much change all at once? A calendar note: If you approve the four-by-four schedule, you must allow for two staff days between semesters, because second semester will actually be a whole new roster of students and new preps for many teachers. Please ask good questions and get solid answers before you vote in another change.
Our next speaker is Amber Thompson, then Kathleen Brown, then Thomas Coant.
Welcome.
Good evening. First, I want to let you know that you have overwhelming support for the decision you made last week regarding masks and the executive order. Thank you. We see mandates being lifted and/or struck down all over the country, as well as the rest of the world. It should always be a choice, especially when it comes to children. This isn't normal, and it should never be made to seem normal to them. We are their protectors. We're always supposed to make sure that they know everything's going to be okay. When there's a tornado, a fire, you know, an active shooter, God forbid, any of these scary events, do we sit there and tell our children to be scared and that they could die? No, we comfort them, and we tell them everything's going to be okay. We should never put that burden on them to carry. At the special meeting last week, I felt our children had a target put on their backs by comments made. It was as if there would be a terrified child sitting next to my diseased animal of a son. There are parents and teachers openly calling for segregation. What year are we living in that this is a thing? How did we get here? I understand their emotions on both sides of these issues, but to have educators using language like this on social media and other places is frightening. It has been made to sound as if people like me who would like the choice of masks don't support our teachers. And that couldn't be further from the truth. We've all taken on way more than honor plates than we can handle these last two years, but the most vulnerable of us all are these children. When we put these labels on them and put thoughts into their heads that they should be afraid of each other, that is no different than bullying and intimidation. Just because one side may be louder at a school board meeting, let's not forget the harassment that happens behind the scenes. No one is banning masks or putting others in danger by simply sending their child to school. This issue has become less about health and more about a political divide and vengeance. Recently, I watched a video of a Fairfax school where the children were actually getting a mask break outside in 24-degree weather. Instead of COVID, they were succumbed to possible pneumonia while enduring freezing cold temps. So let's not diminish the health and safety concerns that we have for our children due to the prolonged mask-wearing. Their health should matter, too. I keep hearing, "Wearing a mask keeps kids in class," but how do we know? We haven't done the opposite for the last year. I have a one-year-old who is considered vulnerable. I have friends with immunocompromised children. They are all suffering, and they still want the choice. I can't believe I'm still here having this discussion with you all after Thursday, but it seems like there's a potential for some backtracking. I urge you not to let a move like that be your defining moment. I urge you not to let a move like that be your defining moment. This was such a huge step on Thursday, and we cannot confuse these children any longer. We are successfully one day into this.
Thirty seconds.
We owe it to these children to let it play out. It was so heartwarming to hear the kind messages put out by principals and the kindness between all students, mask or not, today. Let's all follow suit. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Brown, then Thomas Coant, and Mindy Huff.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Brown. I want to first start by thanking the administrative staff for all the great information that was provided today in the workshop. My son had a very positive first day back at school without a mask. He considers it his first day, because the last two years feel lost to him. I'm also grateful for your vote last Thursday to follow Executive Order 2, for the most part. I understand there's a lot of folks that are concerned, and I truly believe the time will show the same thing as other districts that aren't forcing masks. I think the data is going to show those numbers soon. I am disappointed, however, that it took you all an executive order for the board to vote in favor of parental choice. I hope that once this new data comes out, teachers will also have the same option as students extended to them. The parents have told you for months the same code in the new executive order, which is Virginia Code 1-240.1, which I'll read again. "A parent has the fundamental right to make decisions regarding the upbringing, education, and care of the parent's child." I didn't really exactly feel good when I got the district-wide email where it said the line, "This is the only parental right granted by EO2." My trust has eroded a little bit from the board, so I just want to say that. I kind of wondered where you meant with that, and I've heard some chatter. There may be a new motion on the floor tonight regarding masks. I believe the information presented by administrative staff is adequate, that you need to keep your focus off of making new motions. There's plenty of important educational information to discuss tonight, such as the new scheduling proposals. I want to end on the newest information put out by the VDH, which says, "Masks made of plain cloth, masks that are soiled or poor-fitting, and masks that are not properly worn provide reduced to no benefit." Most of these masks are not being properly worn. Most of them are soiled. They get wet within 30 minutes. You guys know that. You're wearing them right now. So let's focus on the scheduling and the students, and let's get back to doing what you're supposed to be doing and not telling parents how to parent their kids. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Thomas Coant, Mindy Huff, Speaker Number Seven canceled, and then it will be Teresa Salud.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. First, let me thank those of you who voted to allow parents to choose whether or not their children wear masks all day in school. I'm glad that you finally returned the children's healthcare decisions to their parents where it belongs. That being said, it is now time to make the same decision for all the teachers, administrators, school employees, and for school board meetings. We all deserve to decide whether or not to wear a mask. It astounds me that those who oversee the education of our children willingly choose to be ignorant about this widely-studied issue. Studies on the value of masks against viruses concluded long before this pandemic that there is virtually no value in covering one's nose and mouth with whatever sort of fabric or material. Recent proliferation of the Omicron variant has proven that masks are useless. In virtually every location where face masks were mandated, the spread of Omicron has been as rapid, and in some cases, more rapid, than areas where masking is optional. As educators and those who oversee them, I would expect that you would actually find out the efficacy of something before mandating it. A study by the CDC in October indicated that Americans were adhering to mask mandates, but that didn't appear to have slowed or stopped the spread of the virus. It also found mask-wearing has negative effects, which include distorting and hiding facial movements and expressions, which enable nonverbal communication. These visual cues are indispensable to teach reading and speech, and also contribute to children's growth and proper social conduct. Masks also contribute to fear in children, as we have heard tonight. Children don't only suffer when they wear masks, they also suffer when their teachers do so. Furthermore, it's time to remove the mask mandate at these meetings. The only thing masks do here is prove that you have power over those who monitor and may want to critique your actions. Masks dehumanize people by hiding facial expressions, which enable nonverbal communication and provide the cues that build trust and empathy with each other. We are made in God's image, and faces, a major part of that image, are being masked and hidden from view. Hiding the human face is, in essence, hiding God. The latest mask mandates have been implemented for the political benefit of those in charge, not for the security of those who might be at risk from this pandemic. They serve to constantly remind us that we should be afraid of the unseen virus and of those with the power to mandate our behavior.
Thirty seconds.
Forcing me to wear a mask says, "Stay in your place, or we'll forcibly remove you." Orwell said, "A vision of the future would be a boot stomping on the human face forever." But he never could have imagined the human face would be masked. Someone please make a motion tonight to make masks optional for everyone in the schools and in this chamber. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mindy Huff, then Teresa Salud, then Lindsey Riley.
Welcome.
There is no greater priority than the health and welfare of Virginia's children. Under Virginia law, parents, not the government, have the fundamental right to make decisions concerning the care of their children. As a parent, I believe wholeheartedly in the above statement. Hence, it's why I'm here to advocate for my student. When the school year began, the district and the board put forth mitigation procedures to return to in-person learning by following the CDC recommendations. Although there are several, including wearing a mask, I want to bring attention to one in particular: social distancing. We are not Disney. Our school did not magically increase square footage to accommodate this recommendation. This was a concern of mine while attending my students' open house. I shared that concern with every teacher and the principal at that time. We still have classes with desks, four desks pushed together, with students facing each other. Students are assigned seats. While there is no way social distancing can be obtained with 25 to 30 students in a classroom, I found some security with the mask mitigation being in place. There's nothing that we can do to fully protect our students from the virus. However, there are steps we can take to reduce the possibility. Our family has taken additional steps to help protect our student by dropping her off and picking her up daily from school. Some families are not able to do that because of work and other activities. Our family was able to purchase KN95 masks for our student. Some families are not able because of the cost. With that being said, if this board is truly for parental rights, then consider also the rights of the parents who have grave concerns with their students being in close contact for hours at a time
Thirty seconds.
with students who are not wearing a mask. Our family know all too well the devastation of this deadly disease. We have lost several family members and friends that have succumbed COVID. The virtual option is a way for some parents to protect the health and the welfare of their children. I ask that this board do everything in their power to consider those parents as well.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teresa Salud, then Lindsey Riley, then Erin Rash.
Hello.
So, elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds. I just want to tell you, our school district took in a total of $47.2 million just in the CARES Act, the C-R-R-S-A Act, and now they're slated to take the SER III at $54.9 million. For all three of these, the grand total of roughly $102.2 million. My thoughts are, how much has already been spent and on exactly what items? What still remains of this money? And will it actually fund getting the kids back to the respectable intellectual levels they deserve, as if the pandemic never existed? Did any of the funds actually go to cleaning and installing of ultraviolet lights into the HVACs in every school building in the city? So students and staff were protected from the circulating air containing the deadly virus ravaging through the students and staff. What strings are attached? When the school board members decided to take federal dollars, is what inquiring minds want to know? Is it to encourage more masking of children and to set up vaccination clinics on school grounds, causing mental and physical abuse? Masks and vaccinations are not slowing the Omicron spread. The problem is, the community's critical thinking and research on the virus science has been severely paralyzed by fear. You continue to instruct the children in fear by your actions when you are sitting on the dais with the ineffective mask. It's okay, because I know what ideology you are. I will be calling the governor's tip line to report your deliberate disobedience of his executive order on optional masks to give parents the right to healthcare decisions for their children. If you don't cease and desist with the teaching of critical race theory or SEL, each teacher will be reported. Going against the executive order is going against the citizens who elected change and common sense to be brought back to our great state. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Our next speaker is Lindsey Riley, then Erin Rash, then Janair Davis.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Today was the first day in almost two years that my asthmatic son attended school and didn't feel uncomfortable or need a mask break, so that was amazing. Today, my two high schoolers, who are new to Kellum, they were able to actually see some of their classmates' faces for the first time ever since starting there in August. They were like, "Wow, some of these boys are actually cute. I never saw their faces before." They were excited to go to school today, and all three had great days, which is awesome, because that has not happened for a very long time. This is what we need to have happen consistently. You made a choice to allow parents to have a say in what's best for their children, to mask or unmask last week, and I have to say that was the right decision. Now, it is unfortunate that I've heard that Mrs. Anderson, who attends crowded weddings unmasked, and who even said in the last meeting that her own grandchildren attend school in Florida where masks are optional, is thinking about a new motion. And I want to ask you this, Ms. Anderson. Why is optional masking okay for your children and grandchildren, but not okay for mine? If COVID is so dangerous, why are we attending large family gatherings, weddings, unmasked just a few weeks ago? This hypocrisy, it needs to stop. At what extent do my children have to participate in your self-image? We need to change the narrative here, guys. Freedom is a choice. It's not selfish, but expecting others to live in your fear or opinion, especially when people like Ms. Holtz and Ms. Anderson pull the whole, "Do as I say, not as I do," roles for thee, but not for me, it's very hard to take leaders seriously and respect their decisions to keep your child in a mask when you see them out in town shopping, like Ms. Holtz, without a mask, or at large family events, like Ms. Anderson. Somehow, that's safe, but my child sitting in a class isn't safe. It's time to give parents and students a choice, and I'm looking forward to this being over soon. I want to move on. I want my children to like school again. It is not your job as school board members to analyze or interpret the law, but I think it was smart to allow for this to be settled in the courts and, in the meantime, respect our new governor and the executive order and allow parents to do what is best for their children. And I also just wanted to bring up another thing that we haven't talked about is the testing for unvaccinated athletes. I think it's discriminatory. As we can all see, my sister is actually a fifth-grade teacher who is vaccinated, and she has COVID right now. People that are vaccinated can get and spread COVID just as easily as unvaccinated, and you're just discriminating against the unvaccinated athletes. Let's test them all. If we really care about who has COVID and who's spreading it, let's test them all, or let's test none of them. It is not fair to isolate these kids out and make them feel different or like they're doing something wrong because they're not vaccinated. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Our next speaker is Erin Rash, then Janair Davis, then Karma Johnson.
Welcome.
Thanks. I honestly can't believe we are here again to possibly discuss the governor's clear executive orders. It's funny, I saw everywhere today, most kids had a good day, and everyone was respectful of one's choices. So if the majority of kids can do it, why the adults cannot? If you're reconsidering to not comply with the executive orders, then right now, in this moment, you are teaching children, "Hey, you don't have to follow the rules if you don't like them." You're showing it's acceptable to grow into adults, to cherry-pick whose rules they follow and respect as long as those rules align with their own personal opinions. My children, along with many others, had to follow the rules over the last two years. We didn't like them. We didn't agree with them. But you know what? We sure as hell had to follow them. My children will be following these executive orders to a T, because those are very clear rules now, whether you agree with them or not. Let's stop the fear talk of being around unmasked children. It's not my child's job to make you or your family feel safe and healthy as grown adults. You have masks, shields, the vaccine, and whatever else you want to protect yourself. When you decided to become a teacher, especially at an elementary level, you knew that you'd be puked on, have a Band-Aid to put on a bloody scraped knee, be exposed to strep throat, lice, the flu, and every other virus. Yet, up until two years ago, you were not actively trying to force our children in a mask. Why? Because it's not about you being scared. It's about you wanting everyone to live like you and to conform to your same beliefs and opinions, and while that's simply not how freedom of choice works. Dave Chappelle said it best, "I support anyone's right to be who they want to be." My question is, to what extent do I have to participate in your self-image? This statement was made in different regards, but can most certainly be applied here today. We have every right as parents, children, colleagues, employees, just as simple human beings, to not be forced to participate in any other person, parents, school board, or teachers' fear, opinions, or beliefs. Freedom of choice is not selfish, but expecting and forcing all others to live like you and be like you is very selfish.
Our next speaker is Janair Davis, then Karma Johnson, then Lucia Owen.
Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, board members, and Dr. Spencer, all those who've been here this evening. My name is Janair Davis. I serve as the student representative on the Portsmouth City School Board. I come to you all today to address your school system not having a student representative on your school board. I would think the fourth-largest school district in Virginia will have a student representative on their school board. There are four cities in Hampton Roads who have student representatives: Portsmouth, Norfolk, Newport News, and Hampton. Suffolk, Chesapeake, and Virginia Beach do not have student representatives. I serve over 14,000-plus students in Portsmouth. I am the fifth student representative in Portsmouth's student representative history dating back 2016. I believe that Virginia Beach Public Schools should add a student representative to their board to represent the 65,000-plus students of Virginia Beach. You might ask, "Why does Virginia Beach need a student representative?" Students' concerns need to be heard. Most students aren't going to tell an adult, because they feel as if the problem isn't going to get solved. Adults can't represent students like a student can represent a student. VSA's policy states that the student representative on the school board has to be a 12th grader, and the alternate can be a 12th or 11th grader. I hope you all take this idea into consideration. I would be glad to have a conversation with you after this meeting. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Karma Johnson, then Lucia Owens. Speaker Number 14 had to cancel, and then it will be Virginia Booth.
Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Chairperson Rye, Vice Chairperson Melnick, school board members, engaged parents, teachers, and concerned citizens of Virginia Beach Public Schools. My name is Karma Johnson. I'm the school board student representative for Norfolk Public Schools. First off, I just want to say I do not support the Virginia Beach City Schools dropping the mask mandate. You have many students who attend the Magnet School, Governor's School for the Arts, located in downtown Norfolk. The Virginia Beach City Public School students attend classes every day with students from six other districts. Not only are you putting your own city at risk, but you are putting six other districts and their families at risk. You are telling the students of Isle of Wight, Chesapeake, Franklin, Suffolk, Norfolk, and Portsmouth that they don't matter. So I ask you, do you think that they matter? Do you think that your students and their families are the only school district that matters? Because I have six other districts who would strongly disagree. With that being said, I speak for 36,000-plus students in my city to make sure their voices are heard and their needs are met. Since I've become the student representative for Norfolk Public Schools, I have had numerous students from your city specifically, including students from Kellum High School and Princess Anne High School, come to me about how to become a Virginia Beach School Board student representative. come to me about how to become a Virginia Beach School Board Student Representative. So how do they become a student representative for the city of Virginia Beach? The students of this city want their voices to be heard and their voices deserve to be heard. Wouldn't you agree? I not only encourage you to begin the process of obtaining a School Board Student Representative this year, but I encourage you to obtain two student representatives, seeing as how you have more students in this city than the cities of Norfolk and Portsmouth combined. Two cities that both have student representatives on their public school boards. Show your students that you value their voices and their input. I'd like to remind you that without students, there are no schools. Without schools, there's no school board. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Lucia Owen, Virginia Booth, and then Chris Just.
Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, School Board Members. My name is Lucia Owen and I'm the mother of a second grader in the Virginia Beach Public School System. I'm here tonight to discuss the topic of the masks and Governor Youngkin's executive order number two. Today was a good day. It was a really good day. These children across the city and the state were able to smile and breathe without having to cover their faces as they have for nearly two years. My child is an exceptional individual. She's taken everything and she, sorry, this is going to get me a little broken up, but she's taken everything that has been dealt with her with stride. She, her classmates, her friends, other students. They've tackled a remote learning environment while in kindergarten, managed the inconsistencies between the classroom learning and remote learning of last year in first grade, and has powered through the difficulties since the fateful Friday the thirteenth in March of two thousand twenty. Fast forward to today. For the first time in nearly a one quarter of my child's life, she was able to go and attend school indoors and share her smile with others. I wish you could see it because it's beautiful. She's done everything asked of her. All the way from quarantining, when my husband was exposed to somebody with COVID, to even quarantining for herself because she had Omicron at the beginning of the month. Myself, her and our fourteen month, her fourteen month old brother, my son, all had Omicron and we all made it out and we're fine. She stood strong through it all. But when it comes to school, her smile has never really shined since March of two thousand twenty. But that changed today. Her smile was big and bright as ever. She was very excited to return to a sense of normalcy, where she was treated as a child and not as a biohazard. I chose to come tonight not because of any political affiliations I have, but because my daughter and the severe effects of these mandates they have caused her. These children are suffering, as you heard tonight. They will have significant emotional and psychological issues for years to come because of how they've been treated. The majority of this board voted on January the twentieth to respect my right to choose what is best for my child in terms of her health. I have done so by allowing her to enter the schools without a face mask, as she has now COVID antibodies. I'm asking this board to continue with the same understanding that this is the parent's right and choice to determine what is best for their children's health and not the school system. Thank you and have a good night.
Our next speaker is Virginia Booth, then Chris Just, then Kendall Meadows.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Booth and I'm a resident of Virginia Beach and I love this city dearly. This is where I met my husband, where I had our babies.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, can you please mask up?
Oh yes, of course. I noticed someone else was out with a mask. Can I start over since I was interrupted? No. Okay, this is where I met my husband and where we intend to send our kids to school. No, my kids are not currently in the Virginia Beach School System and honestly, thank God. When COVID hit, we did the best we could do with the information that we had at the time. But now it's been two years. Two years of actual data that we can look at and we can reflect on. And statistically speaking, COVID poses no risk to our children. There are roughly seventy-four point two million children under the age of eighteen in the United States. And according to the CDC this morning, do you know how many have died of COVID? Eight hundred and sixty-two. That's a percentage of point zero zero one. According to the Virginia Department of Health, during Omicron, the outbreak regions with restrictive masking policies showed similar rates of transmission as regions with less restrictive mask policies. The CDC has also admitted that cloth masks, which most kids wear, do not stop the transmission of that variant. So now that we've established that COVID is not a risk to our kids and the use of masks is not effective in stopping the Omicron variant, which we know is the dominant uh, strain in, in the United States. What can we establish? Well, we can establish that our kids are falling behind. Children learning to read cannot see their teachers' mouths move or hear them properly enunciate their words. Your children, your grandchildren, can't see the smile of encouragement from their teacher's face after a job well done. Think about that. Think about that. They're missing social cues, expressions, and we substituted create screen con and we're calling it social interaction. These things matter and they affect the psychological development of our children. At this point in the pandemic, anyone that wants to get vaccinated can. Of course, for our children under the age of five, we've already established that it poses no threat to them. So why are we asking them to mask? Is it because you're afraid? Mask up. But are you actually asking our children to carry your burdens and fears on their backs? Or, in this case, their faces? Are you actually afraid of COVID? The answer is no. If you are actually afraid of COVID, you would not have the audacity to attend large functions like a son's wedding, maskless, Ms. Anderson. So what this, is this about? It's about power and control. You've had it for two years and you're fighting to keep it. But guess what? Gone are the days where parents no longer pay attention to who was on the school board or what they're talking about in school board meetings. We're paying attention and trust me, we care. So in closing, I'd like to say, don't get too comfortable in those seats. We see you and you're cowards. You're hypocrites and you're all very replaceable. Thank you.
This time? Our next speaker is Chris Just, then Kendall Meadows, then Bridget Groves. Chris Just?
Go on.
Our next speaker is Kendall Meadows, then Bridget Groves.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm a parent of two Virginia Beach students, speaking to you. So you can weigh opinions of parents who demand personal, who, opinions of parents who demand personal choice against input from those who believe in science. Science tells us coronavirus can be deadly. It tells us that Omicron, though less often deadly, spreads readily and can cause severe or long-term illness, and yes, even death. You must weigh the voices of constituents who trust the CDC, whose world-class epidemiologists on the matter of masking have found that. One, COVID nineteen is predominantly transmitted by inhaling virus-laden respiratory droplets and aerosols. Two, masks reduce the emission and inhalation of these particles by the wearer. Three, the community benefit of masking depends on reducing emission and inhalation. And four, more than fifty percent of people carrying COVID nineteen are completely unaware. The CDC reports that in community-level analyses, at least ten showed new infections fell significantly with mask mandates. And in three of these, fewer deaths resulted. On the USS Theodore Roosevelt, requiring masks reduced infection rates by seventy percent. In schools, US counties without mask requirements experienced larger increases in pediatric COVID rates last year. And outbreaks in K through twelve schools were three and a half times more likely in districts without mask mandates. Some news outlets have reported that cloth masks worn by many students are useless, but the CDC disagrees. Acknowledging that more layers, higher thread count, and better fit improve filtration. But it says well-designed studies have shown that multi-layer cloth masks block the exhalation of most large droplets and fifty to seventy percent of aerosols. Again, more than fifty percent of people exhaling infectious particles don't know they carry the virus. Another argument suggests there are ill effects of masking. But in studies of schoolchildren, as reported by the CDC, no adverse effects have been shown on heart rate, oxygen saturation, or other cardiopulmonary concerns. One study found masking the lower face had an effect on a child's ability to read emotional cues similar to wearing sunglasses. In fact, the negative effects amount to this. There have been some self-reporting of acne,
Thirty seconds.
itching, dry skin, discomfort breathing during exercise, and headache. So there's your dilemma. Do you protect children from the chance of acne or discomfort? Or do you increase protection as much as seventy percent for an entire community? Children, teachers, staff, the elderly, and healthcare workers? From a virus that the world's leading authority on infectious diseases tells us can be deadly even in children? A virus that by overburdening our hospitals makes other health problems, ones that are treatable when they're buried in our facilities, also deadly. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're going to move on to our online speakers. Um, speaker number one is not online, so we'll go to state-
What about number eighteen?
I will call for him again. Um, Chris Just.
Oh. Number eighteen.
Sorry. Bridget Groves?
Welcome.
Good evening. Can I, um, actually pull my mask below my nose because my glasses are fogging?
Just please proceed. Let's see how this goes.
Uh, today my son went to school without a mask. I asked him how his day, day was. He said it felt like freedom, that he could be a good boy. I wanted to address the possible revoking of the mask optional decision. To finally be free of being mandated to wear masks in school has been a long time coming for we, the parents as well as our children. My son prays every single night that he doesn't have to wear a mask to school anymore. Governor Youngkin's executive order, as well as Virginia Constitution, clearly states parents have the fundamental right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of our children. Both give us the right to decide whether or not our children should be or shouldn't be masked. If you revoke your decision, you are creating more frustration for these children who have now been told they don't have to wear them. My son was a kindergartner at John Bedi with extended day kindergarten when this all started. Since the pandemic starts, he, I've watched my son, who loved school, was learning, become frustrated, angry, sad, and not like going to school when they went, when they returned. The science behind these masks shows children's IQs are twenty percent lower and they show a twenty-five percent lower cognitive learning skills. Oxygen deprivation also kills brain cells, according to science. I urge you to leave the decision to whether our children wear masks to school or not up to us. We live in the land of the free and the home of the brave. If we are brave enough to not wear masks, you need to let us have the freedom to make that choice. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, now we will move on to our online speakers. First speaker will be Stacy Martin. Please unmute.
So are, is number, excuse me a moment, is number one offline?
Number one is offline, yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Um, good evening. So I find it incredibly ironic that for today's agenda packet, you'll be discussing PBCPS policy three dash six six, which says in section A, and I quote, "It is the desire of the school board that the facilities of the school division be made accessible and usable by persons with disabilities in accordance with state and federal law and regulations." I simply do not understand why metrics are not part of the unmasking conversation, especially because you have an obligation to students with medical five oh fours and teachers with disabilities. I urge you to create a metric-based plan for unmasking and remasking that takes community percent positivity into account. Unmasking at forty percent positivity for a virus that has an R naught of seven, to me, is a clear violation of your own disability policy three dash six six, a clear violation of Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, and a violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act. At the very least, you should stand up immediately. A virtual option for students with five oh four, an in-person learning program for students with five oh fours at several locations across the city where masks would be required, and/or approve all requests for homebound destruction for those with five oh fours that want it. There are seven states with pending lawsuits related to unmasking in students with disabilities. In the first few cases, they have ruled that not having masks is a violation of American with Disabilities Act and the dis, uh, Individuals Disability Education Act. Seven states. Virginia will make it eight. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kristen McDonald. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Hi. Um, hi, everyone. I'm the parent of a Virginia Beach third grader. Uh, and there are so many things that I wish I could talk about tonight and I really wish it could be an actual conversation with answers to my questions. But with the three-minute format and no responses, I'll stick to expressing my frustrations with last week's vote to follow the governor's EO versus following state law, science, and CDC guidance. Um, and I'll be talking about my decision to homeschool because of it. Masks don't magically work one week and then not the next. No new research came out, no new data to say that masks don't work all of a sudden. While I know many will disagree with that fact, it is a fact that the CDC changed its recommendation, recommendation to say using better masks, not none at all. And not only masks for some based on your political alignment, but masks for all. We all know what actually did change last week, and that was politics. A new governor came in and instead of sticking to the facts, instead of sticking to expert recommendations and public health guidelines, you chose to follow politics. The administration's recommended compromise, Plan C, was just Plan A wrapped up in fancy wording. Fancy wording doesn't protect my child. There was no real plan, no metrics, nothing for those of us who need protection. In an effort to appease a vocal political group, instead of protecting all children in the public as a whole, you took away the ability for parents like me to protect their children and myself because I am someone who needs protection because I do have a condition that makes me more prone to severe disease. Other boards are standing up for students in public health. Why aren't you? Now, I know some, like Mrs. Hughes, will say, but you can send your kid in a mask and protect your child. But again, to quote so many people I usually don't agree with, facts don't care about your feelings. And the fact is, the masks work best when everyone is wearing them. Everyone, not the kids whose parents want them to versus the kids whose parents want their freedom protected over health. The Virginia Department of Health was posting this just last week about how everybody should be in a mask and a better mask at that. All students need to be wearing them for them to be an effective protective measure. Let me be clear that I don't want to be in masks forever. Please don't put that on me when you talk about what I say tonight. But we're in search. Why can't we get through this together? With last week's vote, you have breached the public's trust in your ability to lead. I no longer have confidence in this administration to protect my child and educate him to look at facts and to think critically as a school system should, nor do I have faith in the boards-
Thirty seconds.
And to vote in accordance with all children's best interests. So as of third quarter, I will be homeschooling my son, protecting him and educating him, since you won't. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Saltesiak. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Suzanne and I am another parent, parent of two Virginia Beach students. I want to come today and talk to you about safety, but it seems that this discussion has come down to rights, so let's just start there. My children and those in our schools have the right to a safe environment for their education. So let's talk about what's safe. The American Academy of Pediatrics currently recommends universal masking in school. The Virginia chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics released a statement saying that it strongly recommends children continue to wear masks while COVID nineteen infections rates remain high. The Virginia pediatricians make the strong recommendation that children wear a well-fitted mask regardless of vaccination status. The CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students, staff, teachers, and visitors to K twelve schools regardless of vaccination status. So I think we can safely say that the experts have stated that universal masking is a component of safety while COVID nineteen infections are high. So if my children have a right to safety with the governor's possibly illegal orders said parents have a right to make decisions about masks, what are we going to do? Well, this isn't the first time that we've dealt with this. For quite a while, smokers asserted that they had a right to smoke. Sure, they do. But after Norris court cases, it was very well established that your right to smoke did not supersede another person's right to help. Basically, your rights end where other people's rights begin. We do this in schools as well. We have peanut-free classrooms and lunch tables because your right to a peanut butter sandwich does not supersede another child's right to safety. So now we come back to safety. Speakers comment and assert that COVID is not that bad. But I know of one contracted staff member that died last week on the day of the meeting and another in a hospital right now with COVID. And I hear from people like Emma's mother. Emma is a senior at Green Run. She had COVID a few weeks ago, stayed home for a week, went back to school as she was allowed. This weekend, she was on the monitor in the hospital because COVID caused her to throw a pulmonary embolism. She may have had a stroke. She had zero pre-existing conditions, conditions and was in good health. Her mother asked me to pass this on to you, that just as people recover from COVID, does- Her mother asked me to pass this on to you, that just as people recover from COVID doesn't mean life goes on like before. Kids like her daughter aren't a statistic. They are loved people with a future that has probably now been irrevocably changed. She isn't a number. She's a human-
Thirty seconds.
-life and safety. Three weeks ago, she was worried about homework, and now she's worried about her heart. And she isn't the only in the child in our school system dealing with this. So I ask again, what are our rights to safety? What are our rights to keep our children safe? We elected you to protect our students and community, and you have failed, while 58% of school boards overseeing almost 70% of Virginia schoolchildren did protect them.
Our next speaker is Elaine Lombardi. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Hi, ma'am. Hello?
Yes, hello, Ms. Lombardi. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening. Firstly, imagine you trying to use the death of 862 children to make the argument that COVID is safe for children. That's just shocking. Now then, I'm here to read a letter written by a community member who wasn't comfortable speaking before you. She writes, "I am a retired pediatric RN, as well as a disabled veteran, and the parent of two children, a junior at Landstown and a two-year-old. We are an extremely high-risk family. My two-year-old daughter has a severe immunodeficiency that prevents her immune system from functioning properly and who requires immunoglobulin infusions weekly in order to thrive. She had a mild case of COVID in August 2020. However, six months afterwards, we discovered the permanent lung damage it left her with. To this day, almost 18 months later, she is still plagued with extreme fatigue, a diminished sense of taste and smell, and she runs fevers almost every day. We rely on the CDC guidelines to help keep our families safe. Eo2 directly impacts us. My son has an IEP, so he needs to be in school in person. BBCPS didn't offer a virtual option for him, so universal masking helps keep him and others safe in school buildings. Masking is the biggest piece of BBCPS layered mitigations, and quite frankly, the only one I've seen happen, haphazard as it may be. BBCPS doesn't offer screening tests, contact tracing has been stopped, and quarantine measures have been eliminated in the high school population. While I do believe all parents should have the right to choose what is best for their child, there should be reasonable limitations. Other parents' choice to opt out puts many in danger of contracting COVID that could be severe or even fatal. I ask you all, does wearing a mask prove fatal to anyone? There is zero evidence that children in school settings are in danger from mask wearing, but thousands of data points exist proving that wearing masks in school settings decreases transmission risk. We've been told repeatedly that the layered mitigations will make schools safe for all children. Allowing opt-outs causes many high-risk and compromised families of disabled children to be left behind because they would deny a virtual option, even though that would have been the parents' choice for their children. Virtual VA is not a viable option for students like my son who have IEPs.
Thirty seconds.
But more disturbing is hearing my son tell me that many students and staff aren't wearing masks correctly. My son has had to endure his baby sister being hospitalized several times for something as minor as a cough, so the importance of hand washing, social distancing, and most of all, masks, gives him a sense of security that he's significantly less likely to break COVID on. But now, his concern decimates my trust that BBCPS can keep my family safe. IEP services must be provided. How will my son be educated when BBC-
And that is time. Our next speaker is Kat Evans. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Dr. Spence, and members of the board. I am a Virginia Beach studying public school teacher, as well as a Virginia Beach studying public school parent. So I have a child in the schools. And I don't feel safe that my working conditions and that my daughter's learning conditions will be safe for the foreseeable future. So we are enclosed indoors with our classes for seven hours. Students may go to other classes at times, but we are spending a significant amount of time indoors with our students. Our student, the student, my child, is spending this time enclosed in a room with people who are removing their masks, and that's putting her more at risk. Now deciding that now is the time to allow students to unmask, when distancing is a joke, what is the mitigations that we have, these layer mitigations? Hand washing, distancing when feasible? Like, how is that going to keep my daughter safe when people are unmasking and they can't move them and they're sitting right next to her? How is that going to keep my child safe in these schools? It's not. The majority of school districts in Virginia have voted to continue requiring masks, 52 districts so far, and that covers 76% of students enrolled in public schools in Virginia. If the school board hands were tied due to the executive order, then why are the majority of school districts maintaining safety for their students? Seven districts, including one smaller than us and local, have filed a challenge to the executive order as violation of their authority. Why is Virginia Beach not included? 71% of Virginia parents supported mask mandate in schools, according to the polls taken at the beginning of the school year. When infection rates were lower, the virus spread 62% higher in those districts without mask rules. Apologizing to teachers and then putting them at risk with a harmful decision does not change what happens. I tell my students all the time, just because somebody apologizes, it doesn't erase the harm that was done. You do not have to accept their apology. Well, I certainly don't at this moment. Your decision puts my health and my child's health at risk. Virginia Beach Administrative Code 8, VAC 20, Tac 131, Tac 210, states that schools are required to provide a safe and secure environment in which to teach and learn. Given that the CDC and American-
Thirty seconds.
...and Virginia Beach pediatricians all recommend masking, Virginia Beach is a clear violation of that law. I ask that you revisit your decision, do the right thing by yourself and the students you're supposed to be protecting. Don't apologize. Make change. Do right by us. The students and staff deserve it. In his book, Thinking Like a Lawyer, Colin Field asks, "Is it better to be right or do right?" Please do right and follow the CDC guideline. Thank you.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Julie Shepherd. Please unmute.
Good evening. My name is Julie Shepherd, and I'm the parent of a junior at Ocean Lakes High School. We're a military family who moved here last spring. We chose the district because of the quality of the schools and the way that you all have handled COVID and the layered mitigation measures. When we learned of the policy change last week due to Executive Order 2, my son expressed anxiety and concern over classmates not wearing a mask. He reported today that several students were not wearing masks on the bus, including his midday bus to the ATC. Parent Jatana Powers, not able to speak due to work, asked me to read her words. My son is a student at Ocean Lakes High School. The bullying over masks started in his math class last week. Today, he went to class and was surrounded by four unmasked kids. One of them started saying very loudly, "People that wear masks are stupid, that masks don't work," and encouraged all the kids in his class to remove their masks. The sub in the class did nothing about this disruptive behavior. My child felt unsafe and immediately called me to come get him. My son had COVID before vaccines and lost his sense of smell and taste for six months. My son knows that wearing masks work, and we all wore them when he had COVID and no one else in the family got sick. He does not want COVID ever again. My son stated last night, "I never thought having to go to school would potentially kill me, but here I am, being forced into a situation that can leave me injured for life or kill me or a family member. I thought the governor said parents had a choice, Mom. Where is your choice? I would like to ask indeed, where is my choice to have my child in a safe environment?" We knew when we started the school year, you were contact tracing and following a mask mandate. We knew that six feet of distance wasn't practicable, but that our family was comfortable with this due to the mask mandate. I listened to the workshop earlier and heard that you aren't contact tracing anyone but athletes. You can't get tests. You ordered K-95 masks, but you don't have them yet. You aren't able to socially distance unmasked students in the classroom, and you don't have a barometer to tell when there's an outbreak in a class or a school. And from your own admission, state that you haven't gotten an update from the Health Department and anecdotally have decided the district is in moderate transmission. How can you, not a health professional, determine this without any contact tracing? Many of the recommendations for safety for our students and staff are not being followed, and one of the remaining layers of mitigation, masks, are now optional. When students return to the class after a five-day quarantine, who is checking their mask status to guarantee they're wearing a mask for those six to 10 days? Will this be on the honor system? Two anonymous teachers at middle school and high school asked me to share-
Thirty seconds.
...that some of the students were taunting them by pulling down their masks, and even though there's no opt-out form for these children, they're not allowed to say anything. This is not respecting parent choice. I agree that we need metrics for on and off ramps with all the layered mitigation measures, including masking. I implore the board to reconsider their decision and vote to uphold SB 1303 by following the other school divisions around the Commonwealth to protect our students and staff by having a mask mandate until metrics show that removing masks-
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kim Benzey. Please unmute.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I come to you as a mother of children with BBCPS with significant concerns for their safety, teachers, administrators, and the wider public. As Ms. Wright pointed out last week on Thursday, January 20th, there's something such as a broader community that we must incorporate into these decisions. See, there are not just two groups contrary to what might perceive. Yes, there are masked and unmasked individuals. However, there are also unvaccinated kiddos and those who cannot get vaccinations for good reasons. There are those who are immunocompromised, and there are those whose family members are. There are individuals who rely on school for their basic necessities, and then there are some children who need much more support, such as children with 504s and IEPs. So while we're sitting here trying to appease the unmask by compromising, all these students, teachers, administrators, and other family members are discounting due to your perception of being a rule follower. Regarding being a rule follower, let us learn a couple of things while masks is- We're all lifelong learners, so our first topic of discussion is executive orders. While governors would love individuals who are not in the known to be kept that way, executive orders are not law. Executive orders, again, are not laws, such as SB 1303 voted on by elected individuals who represent people. Eo2 was not openly debated legislative piece, but passed by a bipartisan legislator. This was a newly elected governor who negligently decided to appease his voter base by sending an executive order to give them what they now perceive as free rein to do anything because of "parent choice." The topic of discussion today is masks, but what does tomorrow bring? What is kind of a relief is the governor is now backtracking on his executive order, knowing his limits to power, and saying for school board members to wait for court determinations and for principals to follow their directives. While we're on rule following, let's learn about federal laws. As I pointed out a minute ago, various groups are protected by federal laws. So if you're not aware, these are IVEA, ABA, and Section 504. These laws protect students most vulnerable for multiple medical, mental, or educational concerns in which they are afforded a free and appropriate education in the least restrictive environment.
Thirty seconds.
Do you perceive the possibility of virtual school for these individuals being pushed out of school as considered least restrictive? Do you perceive these children, their case managers and teachers will be able to maximize on the accommodations and strategies for these children to meet their goals if they're virtual? Do you think the set compromise of masks of certain parents who opt out, which again is not a compromise, is the benefit for the most vulnerable population remaining in school where they thrive on these additional supports?
And that is time. Our next speaker is Melissa Peck. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm a parent of four school-aged children. Our oldest who attend the Governor's STEM Academy at Landstown, and one is also enrolled in the Environmental Studies Program. My high schoolers request that you not support the proposed high school schedule change, Agenda Item 15B. As a family, we also wish to address masking. On its website, BBCPS lists its core values. The first core value is as follows. We put students first, student-centered decision-making, choosing actions that, above all else, benefit and support student learning, growth, and safety. We ask ourselves, how am I putting student interests and needs first when making decisions? With your vote at the last meeting, you failed to meet this core value. You have failed to put student needs first and have unquestionably failed to support student safety. Masks were the last remaining mitigation strategy being employed inside most Virginia Beach schools under Senate Bill 1303. Masks are most effective when everyone indoors is wearing one. I have the privilege of being able to afford to provide N95 masks for my two kids in high school, but I feel compelled to speak up on behalf of all those families that do not. These parents love their children just as much as I do and seek to do everything within their means to protect their children, but simply cannot afford the time and the money to purchase the safety equipment. Should these students now be at an even greater risk for contracting COVID as a result of your negligent decision? We now have kids in school burdened by the increased risk of exposure to COVID present as a result of the removal of the mask mandate. Some of these kids have siblings at home too young to receive the vaccine or caregivers with high-risk factors. How does this unwelcome distraction, above all else, benefit and support student learning as your core value demands? Personally, I am disappointed that I have spent a lot of time supporting some of you previously, when it is now clear that you do not respect the safety and well-being of my children while they are under the care of BBCPS. We do not want your apologies before you take a vote. Your apologies acknowledge that you have breached our trust in you, but they do not excuse your poor decision-making. As your constituents, it is our civic duty to hold you accountable to your commitment to provide students and staff a safe learning and work environment. I'm glad to see so many doing so tonight. I strongly encourage you to reconsider the vote taken previously and to enforce a mask mandate once again in compliance with SB 1303 and to provide at least one consistent mitigation strategy.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Sarah Gerloff. Please unmute.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
Code of Virginia Title 22.1, Chapter 6, states, "The office of any division superintendent, whether full-time or part-time, shall be deemed vacant upon his engaging in any other business or employment during his term of office as such superintendent, unless such superintendent was granted prior approval by the school board or schools appointing him or upon his resignation or his removal from office." Erin Spence has been listed as the agent of EduNabig, a leadership consultant-
Ma'am, Ms. Gerloff, Ms. Gerloff. Ms. Gerloff. This matter has been addressed previously.
I have new information. It is my understanding that Spence was not given prior approval from-
That this is a personal attack with no direct connection to- Ma'am. Ma'am, I'm offering you one last opportunity to stop this personal attack that's disrupting the school board meeting. Your school, I have to rule you out of order if you don't cease, please.
Okay. Our next-
Please go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Our next speaker is Caitlin Lyles. Please unmute.
Good evening. I'm the mother of two Virginia Beach elementary school students, and I felt compelled to speak tonight to express my extreme disappointment with the school board's vote to choose politics over the advice of qualified experts and to make masking optional. I believe it's important for you to know that the latter group does not necessarily represent the majority of parents in this city. I will talk about why I believe this was the wrong decision, but first, I think it's important to mention my disbelief that a few of you actually apologized prior to making your vote. It seems rather obvious to me that if you have to apologize for the way you're allowed to vote, then you absolutely know it's the wrong decision. But we've been told throughout this school year that layered mitigation strategies will keep our children, teachers, staff, and families safe. Social distancing and improvement in relations are more attempted in some cases, but not always feasible, so I can't possibly understand how we're expected to feel okay with the one consistent mitigation strategy, masks, being taken away. I'm not simply worried about my children and my family members getting sick, although that does play a large part. I'm also worried about the potential for inconsistency in my children's education that will come from increased absences, staffing shortages, which are already high. I'm also worried about the health of the teachers and their families who aren't being given a choice in this matter, and about the impact to the greater community and our healthcare system. Of course, I realize my children can continue to wear masks. They're perfectly comfortable with doing that, and I truly wish it were that simple. But there's clear evidence that masks are significantly more effective if everyone's wearing them. If others, particularly those for unvaccinated, are also unmasked, then my children and their teachers are not as protected. Replacing mask mandates with parental choice just doesn't make sense when that choice has an impact on the health and well-being of others. With that said, I do not want the children to be masked forever. I'm not exactly sure when I think masks should become optional, but I am 100% sure that now, in the midst of the largest wave of cases to date, when our city's transmission level is high and positivity rate is near 40%, is not the time. The BBCPS dashboard has reported over 3,200 cases for the month of January so far. That's nearly four times what was reported for the entire school year last year, and it's six times what was reported for December. It will be difficult to know what the impact of this decision is since contact tracing is no longer happening and tests are very hard to come by. Luckily, there are some indications that this wave has peaked, and I very much hope that- hope that trend continues. I just wish you could have been patient and waited for transmission to come down before you took away the most important mitigation we have. It was clear in the district-wide email which announced this decision that this administration believes that universal masking is effective and that the CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics guidelines should be followed. Despite that fact, neither the administration or the school board...
Thirty seconds.
...were approved by over 50 of the state other districts, including many of our neighbors, who are keeping their mask policies in place pending the outcome of court proceedings. I would like to thank Ms. Holtz and Ms. Owens for standing up for what's right and making it clear that you care about the health of the teachers, children, and families of this city. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Lawrence Reed. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Yes. I have an uncle who died from COVID-19 and a cousin in the hospital right now today. My daughter, who attends the Governor's Landstown STEM Academy and the School of the Arts, has asthma, and my son attends the Old Donation School. This virus affects African-Americans two and a half times as much as Caucasians with death. My family is African-American. We all would like to be masked everywhere. That is a fact, but we must realize that our rights to personal preference are secondary to anyone else's right to life as the Declaration of Independence says. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that we are entitled to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. These are listed in the order of their importance legally. It's a legal document, and it's the one that established the country. In other words, your rights, choices, and freedoms, your pursuit of happiness, is secondary to everyone else's right to life. That's where your freedoms end where another person's begins. It's come to my attention that when Glenn Youngkin has set forth his political party's desire to increase my children's exposure to COVID-19 virus, I fought two years to keep them away from it. With this, let it be known that his order is unlawful, as stated by Virginia Senate Bill 1303, which is a law now, and it was a law when he took office. It precludes all school districts, including Virginia Beach, any consideration outside of that which the CDC has determined prescribed. This law was in place when he took office. So Mr. Youngkin, by his very oath of office, is compelled to enforce Virginia state law, not to contradict it. It seems that he's representing something other than the Commonwealth. That he continues this is a further violation of his oath, a dereliction of his duty, and it shows criminal intent because he's violating the law. The Attorney General Meieris is not supposed to represent the governor's interests, nor is he supposed to champion any legal cause that is in contradiction to Virginia law. That he is doing this in concert with the governor makes this a conspiracy. In addition to his own violation of oath, dereliction of duty, and added criminal...
Thirty seconds.
As for the school board, you are legally bound to follow what the law actually sets. I hear a lot about negative feelings about wearing masks, but each one of us is a potential biohazard. A child's negative feelings about masks is very small. Children who are dead can't do anything. Please note that not one person speaking against masks has had a child to die from wearing a mask.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Lindsay Nathaniel. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Spence. Governor Youngkin's recent executive order violates Senate Bill 1303 and oversteps his authority. But you already know this. Your recent vote put politics over the well-being of our community, children, and educators. I applaud the school boards across the state that are standing up and putting public health first. Meanwhile, you have catered for the least informed. While the majority of parents want their kids in a mask, parents and teachers deserve to know why, not to have multiple emails go unanswered. To say that I'm disappointed in a number of you who previously took this seriously is an understatement. You have thrown your hands up instead of looking out for students and staff while we have record-high cases. I listened to the workshop, and let's be clear about something. The Virginia Department of Health is not what it once was. Removing masks as a preventative measure was updated to support the governor's agenda, not science. The current mitigation strategies are lacking. Teachers report not being able to keep three feet of distance in their classrooms. There's no contact tracing happening. And even when more than half a class plus the teacher has COVID, the classroom is staying open. You can create clever hashtags like #VBSafe together with the S in safe standing for stay home if you're sick. Yet two board members clearly sounded sick at the previous special meeting and came anyway, apparently testing positive the following day. If leadership has given up caring about keeping others safe, what makes you think parents won't send sick kids in and just call it allergies? My family has done everything we can to keep my high-risk daughter safe, including doing Virtual Virginia. But don't think for one second that I'm not angry that she can't return to in-person and experience high school the way everyone should be able to do because of your decisions. My child has rights too. She deserves better than this. Following the CDC guidance for mask-wearing in our schools is the best way to keep faculty, staff, and students safe during in-person classroom instruction. We cannot acquiesce to elected officials who put the health and safety of our children at risk for political gain, including yourselves.
Our next speaker is Allison Romanek. Please unmute.
Welcome. Good evening. I will be reading for a teacher who wishes to remain anonymous for fear of retribution. I've been home for COVID with a week. It started suddenly after lunch. My throat was scratchy and then the headache hit like a freight train. Luckily, my school took it seriously and found someone to cover my class immediately, and I went home. I saw this coming. A third of my students have been absent every day since returning from break. My husband got it for me. However, my recently boosted daughter has not had any symptoms. I have the option to send her to school mask-free. Do you want to sit next to her in class? Do you want your child sitting next to her? Masks are the one layer of mitigation we have left to protect each other. This fight about masks is selfish. You have played into the hands of a small, loud, self-serving group of adults more concerned about mask acne and getting their face on the news than another parent's child spending days in the hospital hooked up to machines. Our schools are supposed to work for everyone. That is why they are public. Our district has given the message loud and clear that they most definitely do not work for the majority or are most vulnerable. I have been teaching for 18 years. I believe what I do is for the greater good of our community. I left a much higher-paying career because guiding young adults to become successful, productive members of society was a nowhere cause. I am a Teacher of the Year, have been tagged by the superintendent. I have made a difference. I love what I do. Now I'm looking for a new career, not even interested in sticking it out for the 20. I am not alone. Our admin and school board members have failed at every step we have made to make a difference, to come out stronger together. Instead, you have chosen to sacrifice the people that care about our children, literally sacrifice. Three of my daughter's teachers have passed from COVID in the past two years. Wearing a mask is a simple way to take care of each other. It is a temporary inconvenience that might mean the difference between a normal life and a life of long-haul COVID effects. It is a public health issue. You have made it political. Option C was not a compromise. It was your arm being twisted by a bully. Every parent should be appalled by the direction we were given during faculty meetings on Monday about how to ignore the safety of our students and refer everyone to our principals. Let them take the heat, right? Downtown admin wants to pretend like we are living and operating under normal times. We are not, and you are making it worse. What I can see happening in my classroom, the experience of having COVID, trying to protect my family and students, have been made exponentially more difficult because of the reckless decisions of this school board. You have let the entire school system down and will...
Thirty seconds.
Masks aren't forever. They should be temporary while we work together through this. Please reconsider masking for all students. As a side note for me, for my parents, as a parent, what kind of world do we live in when teaching self-finishes is okay but trying to protect the health of others is banned? As a parent, my children have our right to protect their bodies. I refuse to allow this division to force illness onto them by forcing them to sit next to an unmasked student. Please reconsider masking for all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heidi Dragneff. Please unmute.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. I want to start out by reminding you that my children are not your data points. They are not part of your wait-and-see-what-happens experiment. We've already seen over and over again the results of this virus. I would like to say that I have medical experience in the medical field as well as my husband. I'm extremely disappointed in our school board's decisions on allowing anyone to go mask-free while we are having the biggest surge on record. It's wholly irresponsible to our babies and the rest of our community. Public schools are the foundation of our communities. They should set the example. If you are sending your child to school in an ill-fitting or dirty mask, that is on you as a parent to make sure you clean them and make sure they are properly fitting or replaced, just like underwear. I would also like to add that pneumonia is bacterial infection. It cannot be caused by cold air. It is caused by sick people being close to other sick people and transmitting it. And an executive order does not override the law. The governor's executive order is illegal. Last week, my daughter caught COVID at school. She's fully vaccinated. We don't go anywhere else. So the idea that there's not high transmission in schools is a lie. Just look at the numbers. We're only three weeks into January and we have over 3,500 cases already. The positivity rate has been sitting around 40%, and that doesn't include home tests. I have a child that has bioasthma and doesn't get over even mild cold without medical intervention. Is she just dispensable to you? I've been fully vaccinated and had a booster, and I should not be sick right now. The fact that I am is proof that the variants are getting stronger and more vaccine evasive. I'm at high risk for stroke, so am I dispensable to you? And yes, I do want the German-infested kids to stay away from mine. Your lack of care does not mean you get to subject my child to a deadly illness. We are seeing some of the long-term effects already, even with being vaccinated. There have been perfectly healthy children that now have irreversible heart damage, blood clots, and lifelong breathing issues, among other things. We have done all the right things. We got vaccinated, we wear masks, we stayed home for the holidays, and saw no one. And because of this small faction of people, we have variants that are becoming stronger than our vaccines. You are allowing a very...
Thirty seconds.
...of ill-informed people who travel around the state in a group to dictate our public health decisions. They have proven over and over again that they get their information from their political idols and skewed news outlets. Just because they are loud doesn't mean they are right. They've put our entire community at much higher risk because of their selfishness and inability to consider others. They are working overtime to overwhelm us and bully us into vacuum down. They are being funded...
And that is time.
Thank you. Good night.
Our next speaker is Melissa Luxon. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
I have a new acronym for everybody. MMMA. Make masks mandatory again. Crazy how some people think if you get mild COVID, then you're fine. And if you got sick but you don't die, it's not that serious like the flu. I will say this. You know what I think people are talking too much about? Death from COVID. Make no mistake, that is a very real risk and should not be ignored. Do you know what we're not talking about enough? The very real documented cases of COVID, related diseases or complications post-infection, regardless if you were symptomatic or had a mild or severe infection, as if death is the only marker. There's a growing body of scientific evidence and very serious concerns from the medical community about the invisible and irreversible damage COVID-19 is doing to the body once infected. Read the studies showing COVID-19 attacks isolated heart cells, causing muscle tissue to look like someone took a food chopper to it. The loss of taste and smell, it's a common symptom in mild cases. It's a neurological symptom, which has medical scientists concerned about the impact on the brain in the future. Multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children is a condition where different body parts can be inflamed, including the heart, lungs, kidneys, brain, skin, eyes, and gastrointestinal organs, all organs that COVID-19 attacks indiscriminately. Many children with this illness have had COVID or were around someone with COVID. Today, all restaurants are non-smoking because of science. You can still find the rare few places that have a separate area for you to suck your cancer stick. Otherwise, you have to stand outside away from others with your stick of shame. Can you imagine the public reaction today if a child was sitting in one of those closed-in smoking rooms? I'm a non-smoker, but I grew up in a family where everyone smoked cigarettes. It was really acceptable to bring your children in smoke-filled restaurants. Our parents and grandparents never considered the long-term effects of secondhand smoke. Who cares about a little smoke in an enclosed room? They looked cool with that cigarette in their hand, filling the room with cancer-causing carcinogens. Did my parents and grandparents think about their reckless decision of smoking cigarettes in our homes and restaurants? Today, at 45 years old and a cancer survivor, I often wonder if their ignorance was the cause of my suffering later in life. My point in sharing all this is that there are millions of people...
Thirty seconds.
...who are healthy. Like I thought I was until I was told I had cancer, by the way. I wasn't symptomatic. Thanks to science, testing, and modern medicine, I'm alive today. Several speakers that have been verbally assaulting the school board and admin for 18 months are considered medically obese or overweight. You might feel healthy, but at no time do you know exactly what's brewing in your body. Multiple layers of mitigation are critical when you have a surge like the one we're in with Omicron. Thank you. Have a good night.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Melinda Rogers. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. As you know, I'm a teacher with the division, and I wanted to speak tonight regarding the unintended consequences that have occurred due to the decision made on Thursday evening whereby the division attempted to follow two opposing governing directives. First, I want to address the layered approach to COVID mitigations that are now in place. In my own classroom, I have an air purifying machine. I open my windows daily. I have provided at my own expense a box fan to move the air through the classroom, and we wash our hands. Last, I can keep students separated three to six feet apart. That's it. Those are all the layers. So as you can see, none of these layers address how to effectively mitigate students who are closer than three feet distance. Per CDC guidelines, masked students could have shared experiences in the classroom that would bring them closer than three feet apart, providing that masked students were together for less than 15 minutes. Lifting masking has eliminated the following opportunities in the classroom for students. Younger students can no longer experience shared centers. When young students were cohorted and masked in the classroom, they were able to enjoy shared materials and experiences, playing together in the classroom at times less than three feet apart. That is no longer an option as students must maintain three feet of distance without masks. In my classroom, shared centers were put away today, and individual boxes of materials were brought back out as last year. In other classrooms, partnered reading has had to end because students cannot sit together with a shared book and read to each other while maintaining three feet of distance. Partnered and group work with math exemplars had to be put on hold because teachers cannot give students shared materials and keep three feet of distance while working on an exemplar. Small groups had to be moved into the hallway today because there are too many students in some of the small groups to be able to safely keep them three feet apart at the teacher table. The only solution this teacher thought of was to take the groups into the hallway, which caused a definite distraction to the students. Other unintended consequences include the following. The division has attempted to keep teachers from being responsible for who is masked and who is not. However, this has caused nothing short of chaos in the elementary grade levels. Parents are signing the opt-out form for their students, but then students are coming and masked off the bus and keeping their mask on all day. Teachers can say nothing. Parents are also requesting that their child remain masked all day, but teachers are not allowed to remind or tell students to keep it on per their parents' wishes. Today was not about parent choice. It was student choice, and some of these students making these decisions are four, five, six, and seven years old. The sad thing is that every single staff member showed up today, did so for the students. They came in prepared as they possibly could, even though the directives they were given were woefully inadequate to prepare them for the school day. Building staff and bus drivers made today a success. It's high time to start supporting your staff and bus drivers with your decisions. You're supposed to be oversight for the division and ensuring all options presented are fully vetted. We are tired of dealing with the consequences of the decisions that are made by our staff to deal with the fallout. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Liz Winters. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening. I am a former VB CPS PE teacher assistant. I carried this job title for eight years and made the tough decision to leave the education field completely. I am sharing this on behalf of Monica Ullari, a single parent of a first grader and kindergartner in Virginia Beach schools, whose caregiving responsibilities prevent her participation tonight. Monica states, "I have some serious concerns about the school board's recent decision to make masks optional. Practically, we're in a surge right now, and removing mitigation in a surge will result in more students and teachers exposed and needing to stay out of school. I've heard in recent meetings the importance of minimizing learning loss and ensuring schools remain sufficiently staffed to continue in-person learning. This policy, which increases quarantine time for all students, even those unmasked to 10 days, will absolutely result in learning loss and will undoubtedly have an impact on staffing. As a full-time working parent of two young kids, the past two virtual holidays have been incredibly challenging. It's very important to me that the schools stay open..." It's very important to me that the schools stay open and safe for in-person learning. Additionally, I question its legality. While aligned with Governor Yonkin's executive order, it's a direct contradiction of state law SB thirteen zero three, which requires in-person learning be provided and CDC mitigation guidance followed. We cannot both mandate universal masking and allow people to choose not to do it. There are multiple challenges to legality of the executive order in the courts now. This is also not partisan perspective. It has been challenged by members of both parties. Another concern is that masked optional policies have been ruled a violation of the ADA. Because efficacy of masks for land use by all, disabled and immunocompromised students experience disproportionate negative impact of such policies, which can prevent their continued access to in-person public education. As a personal aside, my son is disabled and has a high risk of complications should be contract COVID. His teacher is not allowed to share with me the classroom mix of what proportions are and are not masked. This isn't private information, and in fact, most non-disabled students can probably just tell their parents what the classroom mix is, but his communication skills are not there yet. I am certain I'm not the only parent of a disabled student in this position, and I'm able to make an informed decision as I lack access to the information. And based on the information shared in the workshop today, it's highly concerning to hear that I will not even be informed of his own mask wearing or removal. I fully support parental and individual student rights. When an individual's decision impacts only that individual, absolutely that person should have the right to make their own choices. Unfortunately, public health is not an area that works that way. Similar to a stop sign that only works if everyone accepts the minor inconvenience to ensure the safety of all, masks only work when we all adhere to the policy. It's my position
Thirty seconds.
that universal masking be reinstated until such time as either A, the challenges to the executive order are resolved by the court, or B, CDC recommendations which are based on far more data than the anecdotal experiences shared in many of these meetings are updated to indicate it is no longer necessary. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next speaker is Chana O'Galvin. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evenings. I am a parent of a fifth grader and seventh grader within the Virginia Beach City Public School System, and I wish to express my great disappointment in this leadership's decision to make masking optional in schools. The past two years have been one disruption after the other regarding COVID protocols. And mark my words, this is exactly what the governor's executive order to intends to do. In what world does a leader of its citizens defy a law that seeks to ensure the wellness and safety of students, educators, and staff during a global pandemic? Well, I'll tell you, a world in which politicians devise a cultural wedge issue out of universal masking to blame school board member bodies just such as yourselves for failing public school families with the express intent to ultimately defund them and replace them with vouchers for charter schools that often enrich political donors and puts the entire status of Virginia public education in jeopardy. We cannot acquiesce to elected officials who put the health and safety of our children at risk for political gain. The privilege of parent choice and rugged individualism abandons vulnerable immunocompromised communities to fend for themselves and does nothing to encourage the collective good of society. Both of my kids received numerous recognitions in school for citizen of the quarter or citizen of the year over the years, which is all based on exhibiting qualities such as responsibility, respect, compassion, kindness, courtesy, and moral courage. I only wish you all had the same moral courage to protect all students and faculty equitably. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Clark. Please unmute.
Welcome.
This is from a mother of a VB CPS fifth grader. Governor Yonkin's executive order is an example of political pandering which has no basis in science. The mask mandate was dropped when nothing has changed from a COVID-19 standpoint. Numbers are higher than they have been in a while. We have received regular emails from VB CPS letting us know your multi-layered health prevention strategy was keeping kids safe. However, now schools are being forced to backtrack on that message. What message is this sending our children? My son learns in your, learns science in your schools, but you are currently ignoring the advice of the CDC who recommends universal masking. Health and safety should never be political, but you are teaching students that it is. You claim to have a mask mandate, a mask optional at the same time, but it's not possible since it's no longer enforceable. You cannot enforce a mandate if you are not allowed to ask children to put their masks on. My son has friends who are immunocompromised. There are parents who have children with health issues. Many of these parents are not able to pull their kids from school because they must work. My son is happy to wear a mask to protect his friends and raising my son to be a good person. What message does this send to my child? That we don't listen to science, that politics matter more than the health and lives of children and families? That's from the mother of the fifth grade student. I would like to add my own disappointment on behalf of all of my friends who have high-risk loved ones. I watched them carefully weigh their children's academic and social well-being against the fact that contracting this virus could mean a major health crisis for their child or another loved one. They have a right to a safe environment for their children. They trusted you to protect that right when they chose to return to in-person instruction this year. Not one of them expected the board would vote to remove mitigations in the middle of the biggest surge of the pandemic. Many other school boards have made the choice to protect the vulnerable members of their communities. Not only am I saddened by this, I am worried for the future. I'm worried about whether this board will protect the right for students to learn accurate history, and whether this board will defend the right to an equitable education for all, and whether this board will stand up to those trying to dismantle public education. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Penny Crigger. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. For this mask mandate is very personal. My fear of losing my son supersedes my anger, so if you'll allow me to set the scene. You see, my journey to be a mom was a long and heart-mending one. It was truly the only title I was ever interested in holding. So at age forty-four, when my son was placed in my arms for the first time, God was entrusting me with this most special gift. From that moment on, it was my job to provide love and protection for him. Our son arrived in this world with RSV, for which most can be like a common cold with a recovery time of one to two weeks, but can be serious for an infant and lead to bronchitis and pneumonia. Most children have had RSV by the time they're two. Our son spent the first week of his life in NICU. It was a window into what the next four years would be like. His episodes were so bad within the first seven months that they would diagnose him with acute asthma. A simple cold for your child meant mine would spend overnight stays at CHPD on heart rate monitors and being pumped full steroids that would cause his body to tremble and shake uncontrollably. I would lie there holding my child, watching a heart rate monitor, praying it would not reach a rate where nurses and doctors would come rushing in. My heart was breaking while his lungs were gasping for air. Because of his asthma, every year since the time he was two and started preschool, he had to wear a mask all day while in school. He never complained. To him, it became second nature, and there was no harm to him because he had to wear this mask. Fast forward to March 2020, a family that had a routine now in place to keep our son safe suddenly felt deflated. An only child who needs interaction with other children and the simplicity of being a kid was now being hidden inside his home for protection. He fell right back into all the stringent rules that were once in place and was told he needed to resume three of the medications we had once taken him off for added protection. I share all of this with you not for pity, but for awareness. I completely understand that some may feel that being told to wear a mask may feel like an imposition on your rights, but I'm asking you to look from different standpoints. If you have children that are perfectly healthy, no underlying issue or compromised immune systems, I am so incredibly happy for you, for I know all too well the toll it takes when your child is not completely healthy. There are no definitive reasons why this disease barely affects some and kills others. For this reason, using all resources to keep them safe should be utilized. To think otherwise is simply negligent. I close reiterating that this mask mandate is not only personal, but possibly life-changing for my family
Thirty seconds.
with similar dynamics. My son was able to come back to school because of this mask mandate to enjoy being around his friends. He was able to feel like a part of something. These masks are a layer of protection to keep them safe, because you see, one child may catch COVID and never even know it, but my son may catch it and die. Thank you.
So Madam Clark, before you proceed, we have five speakers left, so I'm just going to propose to my colleagues that we continue. Thank you. All right.
Our next speaker is Annie Palumbo. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Palumbo. Please proceed.
Interesting, the fear that's going around, out of what, sixty-four thousand students, twenty-two speakers online, all choose to stay at home, scaredy, scared, spewing fear. And you know what? I'm going to tell you something. At seventeen years old, I had a child who died in my arms, so I know all about fear. You know, I just, I'm fifty-seven years old. I just got over my fear probably a few years ago. That was very traumatic for me as a high school student, and that's why I'm so passionate about these masks, is because I see nothing but fear, fear, that it's going to follow these children the rest of their lives, because you adults are spewing fear into your children. Please don't do this. Don't let these children live the rest of their lives being afraid of everything like I was. I'm usually there in person. The reason I'm not is because I'm going to the border tomorrow, where kids are being trafficked right beneath our eyes and noses, and that's really abusive. And I can't believe we're here again arguing this. I'm trying to pack tonight, and when I find out we're here again and we have this meeting, I'm like, what in the world? There's some really big problems we have in this world. I just think it's interesting that we're here again. I wonder if the ones viewing the fear on this call, on this meeting tonight are the same ones who sent me demonic calls and messages all last week. After listening to them, I'm like, yep, these are the people doing it. So you know what, you guys? It didn't bother me, but stop this. Life is scary enough. Goodness gracious, let these children have a childhood. Beverly, I think this is very interesting that you did this tonight. Who's paying you off? Seriously, who's paying you off? We're going to get to the bottom of this. I guess you didn't think anything about being maskless two weeks ago at your son's wedding. We've got pictures, hundreds of people at the wedding. You're standing there with the kid right in front of you, no mask, but yet you want our children to wear masks. Shame on you. So last meeting, Jessica and Dottie, I don't know how you guys leave your house every day. I seriously don't. You guys are the biggest fear mongers, yet Dottie goes in thrift stores without her mask. So it's all BS. It's all political theater. You know, some of the kids today wouldn't take their masks off because it's the typical abuse survivor syndrome. They've been abused
Thirty seconds.
They're afraid, they're like, I can't. They always ask, why didn't she leave her husband? Why, or her boyfriend or whatever, or he? An abuse survivor. Because they are so programmed to know only that, and that is what you, you should be so proud of yourselves. That's what you're teaching these children, all of you, all of you adults. So you know what? I, I, please stop this fear. Do not let this happen. We will fight you. I'm not going to stop ever.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Susan Loesberg. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Yes, good evening. I have lived in Virginia Beach for twenty years and have two children who have gone through the Virginia Beach Public School System from kindergarten through twelfth grade. My husband also went through twelve years in the school system. I get it. My younger daughter was a senior in high school when the pandemic started. She never had prom or an eighteen birthday celebration with her friends, or a real graduation, or a real graduation to celebrate her IB degree. She accepted all that because we told her that if she followed the rules and wore her mask and socially distanced with her friends, this pandemic would go away, and she could start college in the fall without masking and without social distancing. Well, she did her part, but not everyone followed the rules, and this pandemic has gone on much longer than it should have. So I don't have a child in the VB CPS school system any longer, and some may say this isn't my business, but I am still a member of this community, and the reckless spread of COVID affects me. After the decision that was made by the school board last week, I felt I had no choice but to speak out. Tonight, I am not going to speak to the data supporting the effectiveness of mask wearing or the present CDC recommendations regarding the mask wearing for our kids, or how this school board is putting our teachers, our school staff, our kids, and our families at home at risk, or why they should do so, and they would do so as we are having a surge in COVID cases, because so many have spoken to that, and this school board body knows the data and the danger, and we know that you do. I am here to talk about how this decision we made to opt out from the masking requirement will affect kids emotionally. My daughter was bullied in middle school to the point where we had to make sure every year that the child who was bullying her was not in any of her classes, and we did that all the way through high school. It affected my daughter's self-esteem and led to other medical issues I won't go into tonight. But one of the results of being bullied is often the child does not want to cause waves or to stick out. There will be scenarios such where parents will decide that their kid will not be wearing masks any longer, and maybe their kid is anxious about that decision but doesn't want to upset their parents. Or a parent says her child must wear a mask, and that child's friends don't wear masks any longer, and she is stressed by that, or she may be bullied or kept from engaging in certain social events with her friends. Anyone who has had a kid in middle school knows how tender that age is and the social pressure that they are under. I cannot for the life of me comprehend why you would support an optional mask-wearing policy at this time. Aside from the very real healthy, the health danger that this will cause
Thirty seconds.
distress within the family and much, much added distress for kids at school. There are countless news articles from across the country discussing strategy for how to deal with bullying in mass optional school districts. Appearances are one of the most common reasons students report being bullied over. As a result, students could be bullied for either wearing or not wearing a mask, depending on the region, because they may not be making a choice that makes them look different. In districts that don't require masks, families are left with a difficult choice for their children, either made
And that is time.
Thank you.
That lady spoke like three or four times. Is this a joke? What a joke system.
She's to be called out of order. She needs to be called out of order for
She's leaving. She left.
She left. Okay. The next speaker, please.
Next speaker, twenty-four, is a duplicate, so our next speaker is Allison Daly. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I have to say, the selfishness displayed by some of tonight's speakers is appalling to me. The callousness of some of them is discouraging and outrageous. So much for our hashtag VB Safe Together, which says face coverings are a must. The form I had to use to sign up to speak tonight includes the words, "All persons in school board buildings will be required to wear face masks." What I've been trying to understand is why the school board and people in attendance in person at the meetings should have more protections than my child who is in school in person does? Why should protections be lessened when one point one million children tested positive last week? Why would you make masks optional when Omicron variant has proven to be four times more transmissible than the Delta variant? As a matter of fact, it's so infectious, it can be spread with a passing breath. Why would you not take every care in the world with the teachers and the subs who are still available and willing to work? Why would you elude the best defense to stay safe in schools if you're going to demand in-person learning? I have done everything in my power, including wearing N95, KN95 masks, double masking, hand sanitizer readily available at all times, social distancing, limiting trips out, kept my kid home for, until he had to go back, until the option for him to school virtually was removed without a reasonable replacement. I fail to see how wearing a mask, such a small thing to keep my child safe, is just too much to ask. Is it because the other people are so loud that you capitulated? Parents who are angry at mask wearing to keep others safe or not the people to be bowing to? I mean, I understand that COVID is an ever-changing problem, and when our numbers are so high, probability of transmission increases exponentially, but the metrics we once followed have been disregarded while variants are running amok. Make it make sense! And while I've heard so many times that it's malware for children, no one knows the long-term the long-term effects that our future leaders will bear. We just don't have the information to make qualified guesses, and we shouldn't have to. Wearing a mask is not too much to ask. Period. Thank you.
Our next speaker is William Norman. Please unmute.
Welcome.
William Norman, please unmute.
All right, let's go ahead.
We'll move on to our, Peter Alaya, please unmute.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I guess the worst part about going last is getting to hear everything that comes before you. So needless to say, I've thrown away what I was going to say and I've had to make a lot of changes because I've heard a lot of passion on both sides. You know, I heard a lot of frustration, anger, conflict, and almost hatred, I feel. But in the same breath, I also heard a lot of love, compassion, and care. You know, we hurt the public. This is the public. This is our community. They're all very passionate people, no matter where they fall, whether, you know, they're worried about the health and well-being of all the students, or they're worried about what they feel might be their own freedoms. They're very passionate. But one thing I do agree with is that I think all of them do truly believe that they are putting the kids first. One thing that I also think everybody agreed on was the non-transparency of what's going on here. You know, a lot of us felt like we knew what the board members were going to vote on. We knew what they were going to do because of what they had said in the past, and then they didn't. And you know, I got to say, just like a lot of other people, and on both sides, I was incredibly surprised and I even felt betrayed. You know, and this is probably why we need collective bargaining more than ever because, you know, just like all of you, and just like all of the public, not all teachers and staff members agree on everything, but it's important that we, you know, come together and discuss it. But I digress. You know, I heard a lot of people talking about the fact that even teachers were perpetuating this fear, but that at other terms that teachers and admin and things like that, you know, people like that were being tyrants. Like, which one are we? Are we cowards? Are we tyrants? I don't get. But you know, I also heard a lot of horribly mean and, you know, mean-spirited words like segregation and bullying going on just because we're trying, you know, we're left holding the bag, as they say, again, you know, and what are we supposed to do? Turn to our admin and put everything on them? You know, what are we supposed to do? Make sure that bus drivers can watch every single thing that every single student is doing all the time? We can't. But what we can do is come out as a, as a school board, this is what you should do, is come out and encourage people to stop attacking us. It's not teachers making these calls, it's not bus drivers, it's not our administrators, it's you guys. All right? And you made a big mistake this time. Okay? And now you're back pedaling a little bit, and I get it. That's tough. I, I don't want to be in your position right now. What do you do?
Thirty seconds.
Take it away? Or do you do the right thing? I, you know, I, I feel very, I feel for you. But you know, I think you know what to do. You know the right thing to do. So let's wait for these numbers to get back down. Let's do the right thing for everybody for right now. It's not that big a deal. Kick it down the road a couple of weeks and let's reassess. Thank you. I appreciate it. God bless everybody.
Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So the information portion of our agenda this evening begins with interim financial statements for November, December.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, School Board members, Dr. Spence. In your board packets this evening are the November and December 2021 interim financial statements. I will keep this presentation focused on the financial position as of December 31st, 2021. The first graph shows that the overall revenue trend year-to-date through December remains acceptable. We received the governor's proposed amendments for the fiscal year 22 direct aid budget on December 16th, 2021. Among the key recommendations in the governor's amendments impacting the school division include an increase in sales tax estimated of approximately $10 million, but is offset by a decrease in basic aid of $7 million. There is also a reduction of $5 million in special aid, reduced regional tuition due to a change made by the state in the program to provide more funding to other school districts. There were also other minor technical adjustments in various SOQ incentive categorical and lottery-funded programs. Based on the governor's proposed amendments and a projection of the March 31st ADM, we are currently projecting a deficit of state revenue of approximately $5 million. As you know, the General Assembly can amend the governor's proposed budget. These are projections, and at the conclusion of the General Assembly session, VDOE will provide updated projected payments based on the final General Assembly's actions. Federal revenues are showing an acceptable trend at this time. We have received impact aid payments of approximately $10 million through the end of December. Other sources of revenue through the month of December are back in line where they were two years ago with schools being open. The next graph shows that the sales tax receipts are at an acceptable level. Year-to-date through December, we are approximately $4 million higher than the same time last year. And the last graph shows the expenditures and encumbrance trend continues to remain acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. At this time, this concludes my presentation, and I'll take any questions.
Colleagues. Okay, it looks like we're set for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now information item B. This comes out of the Audit Committee, the Annual Comprehensive Finance Report. Back again.
Yes. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, School Board members, Dr. Spence. Our external auditors are here tonight to present the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. So we have Cherry Beckert with us. We have Laura Harden and Luke Reynolds to present.
Thank you. And you all have this nice thick spiral notebook at your seats. Welcome to, welcome to all of you.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight to present the report of the June 30, 2021 audited financial statements for the Virginia Beach School Board. So just a little bit about our audit. It's a very lengthy, time-consuming process that spans from the summer all the way to December. There are a few key parts of this audit. The first is the financial audit, where we are testing the significant balances in transactions that are making up that big book that you all have, that is the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. As a part of that, we also test underlying assumptions of significant estimates, those things like depreciation expense, actuarially computed liabilities like your pension and OPEB, because those amounts are based on judgments and can be subject to change based on the underlying assumptions that make those up. We also gain an understanding of the internal control environment. We do that to help us to properly plan our audit and perform the testing. In addition, we're also doing what's called a compliance audit, where we test compliance with the Virginia laws and regulations. Those are the Virginia Auditor of Public Accounts specifications for counties, cities, and towns, as well as government auditing standards, and then doing the federal single audit, testing compliance with those federal monies. In the ACFIR, there are a couple of unaudited sections. Those are the introductory, introductory section requires supplementary information as well as the statistical section. And those are things where we're just providing an in relation to opinion. So we are comparing the amounts reported in those schedules to the balances that have been audited in the basic financial statements. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Luke to go over the results of the audit.
Hello.
Good evening. Just to go over the results of the audit, we have several opinions. The first opinion is on the financial statements, the financial audit opinion. Please report a unmodified opinion, which is also called a clean opinion. That's the best opinion you can get. Next, we have the compliance audits. We issued an unmodified opinion there. We also had no material weaknesses in internal control to report. And in other matters of non-compliance with laws and regulations, under government auditing standards, we had no non-compliance matters to report. Under the specifications for audits of counties, cities, and towns, we also had no issues of non-compliance to report. Additional communications I'm going to provide tonight. Regarding accounting standards and policies, there were no changes in the accounting policies of the school board. There was one new accounting standard adopted, GASB 84 fiduciary activities. In conducting the audit, there were no difficulties in conducting our audit. There were no disagreements with management. We had no corrected misstatements, and we had no uncorrected misstatements. In addition, we're not aware of any consultations with other accountants. And other matters to communicate, we are independent of the school board, and we did provide the management representation letter that was signed and provided back to us before the issuance of the statements. And that is it. If you have questions for Laura and I.
Let me first comment on the Audit Committee. Two of our members are up here on the dais this evening. Mrs. Franklin to my left, Mrs. Owens to my right, Ms. Owens to my right, and, and Mrs. Melnick, the committee chair, is participating online. So I'd like to first offer the opportunity for committee members, if they care to comment, or.
Thank you. This is the second time Ms. Franklin and Ms. Melnick and I am getting to hear this audit report. And ultimately, what we shared in our Audit Committee and want to make sure that we're sharing now with the public and with the staff is that we were incredibly impressed with the work that our staff has done, with the amount of budget that they're required to follow and to ensure that things are going where they're supposed to be going and that the procedures are in place properly. To have the amount of transactions that we deal with and to have an audit come through objectively this clean is quite a feat. And while there's often questions from the public about how funding is being used and how funds are being accounted for, this gives me, and hopefully the public, real reassurance that there are checks and balances in place, in place, and that our third-party audits are coming out above average. They're coming out excellent. And so I'm very pleased with it. Our Audit Committee was very pleased with it. And we thank you for the extensive work that went into this audit.
Thank you.
I would just echo Ms. Owens' comments. I'm actually not surprised that our audit came out this clean because Terry and her team do an amazing job. I am constantly impressed with the work that she does and her team does. And every single audit meeting that I've ever attended has just been overwhelmingly, just impressive in terms of the minutia that they have to sort through and the way that they, I'm sorry, that the way that they handle their positions. So I'm glad that you could attest to the fact that we're doing, they're doing a great job here. And thank you for all your work.
I can share.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify and just make sure that we were giving the, the due kudos. Obviously, we always love Terry and the Audit Committee, but to Crystal Pate and the finance groups that were.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Owens. And I echo your sentiments. I could not have said it better myself.
Is that it, Mrs. Melnick?
It is.
It is. And the only thing I can recall adding, because I, I was, I did sit in on the last committee meeting, was that I think we do want to recognize our staff, too, where you went out of your way to acknowledge their full cooperation through, because you mentioned it was quite a, over the course of many months. And, and you know, this was the reopening of school and with a pandemic. And with all that, that our staff still understood their role and responsibility and fully cooperating with all of you. So.
I want to publicly apologize to Crystal and her team as well. Because there's always going to be someone that you forget to acknowledge, but, but everyone, yeah, everyone here does a great job.
Dr. Spence, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just, you know, yes, and another incredible comprehensive audit report, and one that is consistent with the reports that I think most people on this board have seen throughout their time on the board, at least certainly extending all the way back through my administration. And I know prior to that, which is one of the reasons that our finance team is consistently recognized across the country nationally as an outstanding finance team that consistently receives awards for these audits and for their budget. And I would be remiss if I didn't kind of hearken back to our former CFO, Farrell Hansiker, and remind you, there's a lot of really good information in that CAFR. And hopefully, you will be able to take the time as board members to read through that. It really does give you a great sense of how our budget operates.
All right then. We thank you all for being with us this evening. And we will give this more attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now we have Mrs. Lanetti here to present Policy Review Committee recommendations.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Camille Lanetti, School Board Legal Counsel, and I'll be half of the Policy Review Committee. I'll be presenting tonight's recommendations. Tonight, you will be getting three recommendations having to do with policies in Section 3. Section 3 is our business section, deals a lot with our finance and our business activities. The good thing about all these recommendations is they are basically minor adjustments. There are nothing significant in this area. Starting with Policy 311, Budget, we are asking that you amend this title to be Budget End-of-Year Unspent Unencumbered Funds. We had a fairly long discussion, Policy Review Committee, about how we use our end-of-year funds. As you can see, this particular policy has not been amended since 1997. So again, it was time to look at it. And one of the areas that we noticed was under Section A, where we're talking about unencumbered funds at the end of the year. One of the things we talk about a lot is what we are going to use this money for, as, and one of the areas decided we wanted to add was Section 6, you'll see there. So renumbered Sections, Act 5 is now to provide supplemental funding for this special reserve fund. 6 will now read to reduce future debt service costs. It is a practice you follow. We just want to make sure we're memorializing it here in this policy. We're going to recommend that you take out Section B, and that would be the end of the recommendations for Policy 311. Are there any questions about this policy? Hearing no questions, I'll move on to Policy 334. Policy 334, Direct Appropriations of Funds for Individual Schools. There is a minor scripture of change in the second paragraph where we're taking out the terms his and her, and we're just making a designation, other than that, there are no other recommended, recommendations for this policy. Are there any questions about Policy 334? Hearing no questions about Policy 334, I will move on to Policy 343. Physical Responsibility of School Administrators for Individual Accounts. Again, minor scripture changes. We're adding the word "school" in front of "school board", a couple times, and "school administrators". No other changes are recommended. Again, I will note that this policy has not been updated since 1997, but after reviewing it, we determined there are minor changes needed. Are there any questions about Policy 343? Hearing no questions about Policy 343, we'll move on to Policy 345, Inventories. The only thing we're recommending here is just changing the grammar. It will now read to account for all school property and its current location. The superintendent designee will use the inventory system developed. And then in the second paragraph, we are adding into the inventory, shall include but not be limited to such items as buildings, movable equipment. We added technology equipment as added significant force at this time. Again, a policy that has been announced since 1993, needed to be amended, so we've updated that policy to include the technology equipment. Are there any questions about Policy 345? Hearing no questions about Policy 345, I'll work, move on to Policy 357. This policy had a few more changes, but they are really not significant. They're just updating to current terminology that we are using. This policy is Safety Hazard Communication Program. We've done a little minor change, scripture changes. In Section A, we're pulling out the subcategories of where you would find policy manuals, because obviously this information is now online. And so in the second paragraph, it'll read, the written program will be available to the public in electronic form upon request. We're pulling out all the locations where you would have been able to go to see a hard copy before. Section B is really including renumbering. This is a section that did actually have the current formatting numbering that we use in policies. So you'll see updated throughout the following section, that we've added numbers of subsections to them. The other significant change will come in what is now going to be Paragraph 2, under the second paragraph, sorry, second page. It used to be called Material, Safety Data Sheets. MSDs used to say, there's doubt the current change, that law has changed, and the terminology is now Safety Data Sheets. So you'll see some minor changes reflecting the current terminology for that. Throughout the rest of the paragraph, you're going to see just changes to formatting, to make sure it's consistent and to how we currently use it. Under 5 and 6, you'll see some changes, adding chemicals and unlabeled pipes. Again, going all the way down to the end, we have updated, we pull out the editor's note to be consistent with how we currently format our policies. And there's some changes in the law to recommend the current wording. Again, this policy has not been looked at since 1993, so most are changes to update us to the current law and the current terminology. Are there any questions about this policy? Moving on from Policy Review, we will look at Policy 358, Safety Hazard Ways, Containment Disposal. Again, the same thing we look at. We are actually just changing, again, some of the names of the departments. If you look down Section B, we're referring to as the Office of Maintenance, instead of Office of Maintenance, Plant Services, instead of School Plant, sorry, Office of Maintenance Services, instead of School Plant Services, the changes. You'll see that change throughout the policy. There are a few other changes involving editor's notes and an update on some of the current law and titles for that law. Again, this policy had been looked at in 2014, but we updated the law to reflect the current state. Are there any other questions about Policy 358? Hearing no questions about Policy 358, I will move on to Policy 359. Again, primarily scripture changes. This is Safety under Asbestos Abatement. You'll see we've gone ahead and added in or designated after the superintendent. In the first paragraph on there, you'll see again a reference to the Division's Office of Maintenance Services instead of School Plant Services. And you'll see some updating to the legal references, again, to reflect the current status of the law. This policy was last looked at in 2014, and we needed to update that law. And updated newer law that had been added that was not included in the last version of the policy. Are there any questions about Policy 359? Hearing no questions about Policy 359, we'll move on to Policy 366, Environmental Barriers Accessibility. In this particular policy, we're updating some scripture changes in Section A. We are going to remove Section B, because that appears in another policy. We are going to renumber B, what is currently Section C to B. B now is new construction. And we've updated some of the editorial changes on it and minor changes to the... Filling out the citation for some of the laws that appear after that. We've added the reference to the ADA Accessibility Plan in 2010. Then, this policy was last looked at in 1993, and we've updated it for the current law. Are there any questions about Policy 366? Hearing no questions about Policy 366, we're going to look at Policy 367. This is Environmentally Sustainable Practices. The only change you're going to see here will be in C9. We have pulled out the last couple words of that. It will now specify as a minimum 30% recycled content paper in lieu of standard office paper for all purchases. And we'll be recommending to pull out the rest of that sentence on there. Again, this policy was looked at in 2014, so it does not have as many changes as you saw in some of the other policies. Are there any questions about Policy 367? Those are the end of the recommendations on the information agenda session on the Policy Review Committee.
Thank you. We'll expect to see these next meeting under for consent. So speaking of consent, we have two resolutions tonight. So we'll go ahead and have each of these read and then take motions. And Career and Tech Ed, I believe, is Mrs. Franklin.
Resolution for Career and Technical Education Month for February 2022. Whereas profound economic and technological changes globally have a direct impact on the structure and nature of the work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system. And whereas career and technical education, which provides students with a career pathway for post-secondary education and workplace readiness, is the foundation of a strong, well-educated workforce, which fosters productivity and innovation in business and industry and contributes to Virginia's leadership in the international marketplace. And whereas career and technical education gives students experience and practical, meaningful application of basic skills such as reading, writing, and mathematics, thus improving the quality of their education, motivating all students to achieve at high levels and giving all students leadership opportunities in their communities. And whereas career and technical education offers individuals lifelong opportunities to learn new skills that provide them with career choices, expanded earning potential, and job satisfaction. And whereas the ever-increasing cooperative efforts between career and technical educators, career and technical education administrators, and business and industry representatives stimulate the growth and vitality of our Commonwealth economy by preparing students for careers in high demand, high wage, and highly technological skilled work in a global economy. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the student, school board of their city of Virginia Beach officially recognize the month of February 2022 as Career and Technical Education Month in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board adopted on this 25th day of January 2022.
Thank you, Mrs. Franklin. Now on to School Counseling Week, Mrs. Hughes.
Whereas the Virginia Beach City Public Schools' school counselors are employed to help students reach their full potential. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools' school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools' school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools' school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools' school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas school counselors are a vital part of recovery efforts as they have adapted their programs to meet student and community needs in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas school counselors act as advocates for educational equity, they empower all students, close achievement gaps, and address systemic barriers. And whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school and life. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach recognize the first full week of February 2022 as National School Counseling Week in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of the board.
Thank you, Mrs. Hughes. Okay, motion to approve these two resolutions, Mrs. Riggs and a second, Ms. Owens. Okay, all in favor, please show a raised hand. Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Felton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a unanimous vote, and it did pass. Thank you. Now on to Action, Personnel Report Administrative Appointments, part of our agenda packet. Motion to approve. Mrs. Anderson and a second, Mrs. Weems. Any questions or discussion? Okay, then please show your approval with a raised hand. Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Felton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have unanimous vote. The motion did pass. Dr. Spence, you have something to share, yes?
I do, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. I'd like to recognize Brian Leininger. Mr. Leininger has been a teacher in South Carolina. He has been an administrative assistant in South Carolina. Most recently, has been serving as a teacher at Kimpsville High School. And we're pleased this evening that you've accepted our recommendation for him to serve as the next Assistant Principal at Landstown Middle School. So congratulations to Mr. Leininger.
Thank you. And yes, we all echo that. All right, the High School Scheduling Proposal. We will begin with our motions and then discussion. Motion to approve the proposal presented last week. Mrs. Holt, a second, Mrs. Hughes. Okay. Discussion. I see we have Mr. Delaney here, among others. We'll start with Mrs. Franklin.
It might be a silly question, but I do have a couple of questions. Some of the concerns that were raised tonight, is it at all possible to have any of the exams for the 4x4 classes taken at the end of each semester?
Yeah, so I think I should probably clarify a couple of the comments that were made around testing and AP classes and academic support blocks or study blocks, as I shared those during the presentation two weeks ago. All AP classes will be on an AB schedule, so they will not be on a 4x4.
Everyone, because I think that we had discussed.
I gave an example of advanced calculus class in some instances where a student might find benefit on a 4x4, but the vast majority are on the AB. And when I say vast, all but that calculus course is a potential option.
Okay.
Study blocks are still going to be provided for students. And then to your question about 4x4 and testing, those classes on a 4x4 schedule that are on a SOL testing would test in January at the end of that course. It's an end-of-course test. So those students would not wait till May to take an end of the course SOL test.
Oh, good. Okay. All right. And then, if I may, the Canvas platform that was discussed, when is that, is that actually not going to be implemented till? I know we have a group that has already started using Canvas, but for the majority of the rest of the staff and faculty, when is that actually going to be put into effect? Because everybody that we heard from that has been part of that starting group has really provided great feedback about how great, you know, and easy it was to transition. We've heard some concerns about the transition.
Mrs. Franklin, excuse me, is this, that was teachers, this is high school scheduling? You're asking a... I mean, I'm asking, is it related to the high school scheduling?
I think it was related to the comment that we heard tonight about an additional initiative on top of the other.
On top of the high school scheduling and how it's just going to be another layer of difficulty to implement.
Okay, thanks for providing that context.
But so with that concern being approached tonight, what is the timeframe that we're going to be putting Canvas in place? And are we going to be giving additional prep time to create that transition along with them having to have the new high school scheduling? And I'm just, I just want to make sure that we are addressing that teacher's concern.
Yes, and I'm not the expert on Canvas, so I'm going to have to defer to Dr. Rogers, whose instructional technology team works on the Canvas implementation.
So, good evening, Chairman Y, Chairwoman Rye, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. Mrs. Franklin, to answer your question relative to Canvas, we have taken a step back with the Canvas implementation just because of all the things that we've been working with our teachers with. So we are taking a look at our timeline. Our team still continues to work on transitioning some of the resources from Schoology to Canvas, and we are still working through those processes. And we will certainly collaborate with DASL as well as our coordinators and school teams who are, who started in the process to reevaluate the timeline with which we choose to move forward.
Okay, well, good. And I think that that is exactly why we love to hear, though, from teachers and staff, because, you know, again, I think that was a valid question about the layered impact of having to address both of those things happening at once. So I appreciate the question and the response. Thank you.
Mrs. Hughes and Mrs. Manning.
So we've gotten feedback from students, both for and against 4x4. But as I understood it at the presentation at the last meeting, it's going to be hybrid, because some are best delivered one way and some another way. If we could just... The communications we're getting don't seem to reflect that people realize that they're going to have an option for both, if we could just kind of...
Yeah, I appreciate the question, because it's interesting how often I've heard we're going to a 4x4 schedule, no matter how often we've said we're not going to a 4x4 schedule. I think when you look at the presentation, you would see the opportunities that we listed that we're going to be on an AB block schedule, such as many of our Student with Disabilities courses, NGROTC band, some orchestra courses, probably avid courses. I'm missing some in that list. But there's a comprehensive list that we said would be on the AB. And if you think about a student's schedule, that means the majority of our students are going to be, have at least one or two courses on an AB schedule. Many of our core content areas are going to be on the 4x4 schedule. We talked about that in the last meeting. Thomas Coker also came up and presented that we were going to have everyday math for algebra and geometry for those students that are in need of that algebra and geometry support. So the answer to your question, Ms. Hughes, it is a hybrid schedule. And I think you will find several students, such as the student that talked about five AP classes, maybe predominantly on an AB schedule, because those classes are going to be on the AB schedule so that those students are prepared for those end-of-course exams in May, usually May, when they occur for AP. So there, you will see examples if, when this plays out of kids that may be in predominantly 4x4 that go to the tech center. You may have some students with disabilities that have a 4x4 class, but also have AB classes. I would say the vast majority are going to have a hybrid schedule. I did provide an example of a schedule of a student that did have predominantly 4x4 that was going to the tech center as well. We saw that as advantageous, because it allowed them to focus on two classes as well as go to the tech center. Also allowed them to pick up and still be a part of some advanced coursework as well.
So I thought the presentation we had at the last meeting was pretty comprehensive, and there were a lot of visuals. Is there, if that hasn't already been done, and maybe it has, is there any way to put a link to that on the website and maybe direct some of our high school students or, you know, ones that are going to be high school students next year to it, so they can kind of have a comprehensive overview? Because that might alleviate some of the worries as well.
Yes, and I also provided that copy to all the high school principals and said, please use, it's your leisure. We used a lot of those examples on the webinar that we did last week. I think there's about 450 attendance at that webinar. I'd be glad to find a way to put that link there as well. I think it can become confusing for folks that don't hear the context behind what that is. So for example, many people, when they watched the presentation, saw the schedule and said, are we only offering AP classes in Blocks 3 and 4? So you try to provide those samples, and then people get very literal in what they're looking at. I think the most important thing, as Mr. Jamison said when he was here last time, is they're going to meet with their students and send that information home to families. Families will engage with their school counselors, really be informed on what those decisions look like. And I think that's where the greatest value really comes apart, is that one-to-one conversation with the school counselor. But I certainly don't have a problem with doing that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Manning.
Yeah, I have some similar questions. I was going to ask the same question regarding the Schoology to Canvas concern. So thank you, Dr. Rogers, for addressing that concern. And, you know, I'm still hearing, this is a messaging thing, and I brought this up at the last meeting. I'm still hearing, you know, students saying, we're not going to get a study block next year. We heard it tonight. The message is out there, because they're being told to choose eight classes, and it hasn't been explained to them that they still get a study block. Can we get, please get a message out to families, maybe just bullet points? This is, you know, AP classes are going to be predominantly on an AB schedule. They will get a study block. I mean, just, I really feel like the message needs to get out.
I certainly believe we can do that, for sure. I don't see any concern if the board approves the schedule to say, hey, as this was approved, here's some things we want to highlight that we've heard as concerns. I don't think there's any problem with that. As I was listening to the young lady speak tonight, I'm like, well, she needs to be in... I need to get her principal in contact with her and sit down and really walk her through.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's already happened, where I reached out and said, will you please reach out to this young lady tomorrow?
Yeah, and I got a lot of great feedback from people that attended that webinar, but a lot of people don't have time to put a webinar on their schedule. They can just get an email with some bullet points to just ease their concerns.
Yeah, that should not be a problem at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
We can do that, and also, I'm sorry, we can do that, and also just note, the webinar is on our website. So we can also make sure we send people to it. We recorded it, and they can watch it at their own time.
Madam Chair, both Ms. Melnick and Ms. Felton have their hand raised to be put in the queue.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Anderson.
I won't keep you, because I just wanted to reiterate what Mrs. Manning said. I agree, we need to get the message out. That student that was here tonight was definitely a little misinformed about the AP classes. We were told specifically that those types of classes would be on the AB schedule, so that would be beneficial to get the word out a little bit more clear to people so that they understand that. Thank you.
And if I could just ask you to reinforce again, you said core algebra and core geometry are also AB?
Mr. Coker called it everyday math for algebra and geometry. We will also be offering honors algebra, honors geometry, that would be on a 4x4 schedule. If you recall his conversation around the ability to accelerate math for those students that are prepared for that, towards the real benefits of the 4x4 schedule for those students that can still, even if they start later in algebra, still get to calculus if that's the direction they want to go. And I think that just reinforces our desire to just maximize opportunities for students in a schedule that previously has really inhibited that ability to do so.
Right. And I'll just echo the previous two speakers on the communication piece. It's just very frustrating to have a student at the podium who's so misinformed. I won't say any more about it. Okay, Mrs. Melnick.
Thank you. Will courses be the same for every school in the division to ensure equity for students to transfer between schools?
Yes, that's part of the process of that committee that Ms. Turnbull-Pallett, who was here and spoke from Salem High School. We're really making sure that there's alliance, that transfer can happen. That assures that we have the 4x4 capabilities and the AB components. And the example I'll give to you, and I think I shared this in November, which was a telling point around the need at times to move to this schedule. We had a student at the Renaissance Academy who's on Dr. Spence's advice. We had a student at the Renaissance Academy who's on Dr. Spence's advisory committee that wanted to return back to her home school, but she said, I'm on a four by four to graduate, and I don't want to go, lose that opportunity. That this would provide that opportunity for the student to go back and still have that schedule to do so. So it's a major component of our, our planning. Now, clearly, in some instances, there's classes that are offered at some schools, some dual enrollment and academy that aren't offered at others. But for the general transfer student, that is the case. And I think Mr. Jamison really articulated that well on the webinar regarding transfer students and our military students. To Dr. Spence's point, if you have not watched that webinar, and you're a military family, I highly recommend you do. There was great information from, from Bobby Jamison there on how we really support our military families.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna add, because, you know, the four by four schedule is fairly common in the country. I mean, it is one of the more common schedules. And we do get a lot of families that transfer in here, and it throws them off because they come in and they're unable to match up their schedule with the four by four schedule. So the hybrid schedule will give us the opportunity to meet the needs of students who are coming in in both of those settings, which is a real bonus for, for us, particularly given the military community that we serve. So it's a good, I mean, that's really kind of a good added layer of benefit for us.
Is that it, Mrs. Melnick, for you? We'll go to Ms. We'll go to Mrs. Felton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Dr. Spence, with that note that you finished on, it, it appears that the students are comparing four by four and A P, A B classes out to oranges. And the presentation that you all gave us, it was excellent. Because, you know, we want all our students to succeed. We want all, we want all of us to achieve in this, and it sounds great. So I'm concerned that they are confused about the scheduling. And you're saying, you're using the military also as it being a good fit for them. So would it be much more a good fit for military students coming in and/or our student as a whole? Because I don't want them to be confused about a good thing, and I don't want them to be able to process it through easy, easier, be an easy process. So I'm just concerned about the four by four and the A P classes being confusing. It's like, this is, this is like mixing apples with oranges. Could you give me a little bit of understanding on why they will be confused on that?
I think there's a couple of reasons, Ms. Felton, they may be, I, I don't, I won't use the word confused. I think I'll use the word concerned based on their experience in a four by four model during the 2020-21 school year. And how they, that impacted them on their A P classes, how that impacted on their workload, the, the needs to reevaluate how we pace those courses. As we discussed in the presentation in the la, the last two weeks ago, was the staff development to, to, to work with teachers on how to slow down the pacing, how to really truly, truly utilize those courses around the four by four model. As I think other board members stated, I think if this is approved by the board, we're gonna have to go out and, again, just communicate broadly some key components of the schedule that were accepted and some of the benefits there, and continue to work with our school counseling department to ensure those one-on-ones with conversations with kids and families are very clear.
I can appreciate that, that discussion you're, you're having. I can appreciate that analysis, but I'm just a little bit concerned by approving something that sounds like the students are still concerned, I use the word confused, because the student standing for us this evening, she sounded like she was confused about not being able to do all the other things and being compacted by this. Is it, is it necessary to combine four by four with the hybrid? Can you just have four by four and not the hybrid system?
Yes, you could in some, based on your student selection. If you're talking broadly as a school division, that's not what we're talking about. If you're talking about individual course selection, that possibility would be there. In the presentation that we did two weeks ago, I gave you an example of 11th grade student that would be in all four by four core classes while they go to the Career and Technical Education Center. I think I had a math course that was on a four by four, the, via U S history, the English 11 course, and maybe a biology or chemistry course, one of those two. So there is that opportunity. And as I shared earlier this evening, there's some examples, such as the young lady who was here tonight, who'd probably be predominantly on an A B schedule with a study block embedded in there. Any student that's taking five A P classes, we're probably gonna really counsel them into having that study block class as often a school counselor will do so that they can manage that workload. That happens often, but I hope that clarifies your question, Ms. Felton. Really where I think the confusion ends for many students is when they sit down and have that conversation with the school counselor. They typically do not always understand that until they really sit and see what the opportunities are. And as, as Mr. Jamison said in the last meeting, as they map out their pathway for where they see them going post, throughout their high school career and post-high school goals.
Okay, so what would make this digestible for me? And I'm moving very slowly with it, I'm being concerned about this.
May I, may I interject? Because I think I can help with one extra piece that hasn't been mentioned.
Well, can I just ask this question and you can interject?
Great.
So at the end, will the students and the parents still have a chance to change? If they decide to, as they move forward, will they have that chance to change? Will they be put into this box and not being able to move? And that's it for me.
Yes, Ms. Felton, what they do is when they receive their course request forms, parents have the opportunity to go through that course request form and make change requests. Again, Mr. Jamison, if he didn't do it in the presentation here, I know he did it on the webinar. He really explained that process. But once, and I think Ms. Manning asked the question around eight courses being selected and that confusion. Students then come back and they look at what they've requested, they see how it's being offered, they see if it still meets their needs, and they can request a change to their schedule in that manner, based on what courses are offered.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that's, that was my point, but it didn't come up tonight, but it definitely came up two weeks ago, that they were, they were completing things and that they didn't want. And that, that's a recipe for whatever we want to call it, confusion, concern. We got a few mails, emails, why is my child, why couldn't they sign up for a study block? And I just called this parent to say, look, they gave, you know, it's an explanation concerning with the nuances of scheduling that I don't understand. But from a parent's standpoint, it's very logical to ask, well, why were they for, you know, why couldn't they put down a study block when they met the first time? Why do we have, and, and the same with certain children being forced to take certain electives that they know they're not gonna take. So I'm sure that is part of the explanation. And as you said, when it's the second step, this, that'll all get straightened out. But again, that was, that's not, there was no way for a parent to know that. Their child comes home and says, well, they wouldn't let me sign up for study block. Or says, well, they made me sign up for tech ed or, or shop when I wanted art, you know, so.
I'd also share with you that, that's not unique to this model. In many high schools, they've done that for years, even on the A B. Some have not, but many have. As Mr. Jamison explained and we talk about, they sign up for those classes so that if one does not make, they see what their other choices were, and they make some decisions there on things they previously selected. So that's not completely unique to what we've done in, in many schools on the A B model.
So the bottom, the important thing is that they all do get a chance to correct, fix it, correct it, to the extent that it, they, I don't mean coming up with something that's not feasible, but those little things will get sorted out.
Those conversations always take place. And last thing I'll say on it, there's many times we have a student select eight courses, and many of those are six, you know, several A P classes, and we counsel them and go, that's a heavy workload with the other things you have going on, you may want to reconsider. And sometimes they do, and sometimes they don't. So they have good one-on-one conversations, and the counselors should know those students and, and be able to help them through that process.
And I know you did say the counselors seem excited about this. I do have one question, and it actually was generated by a teacher comment tonight. And interestingly enough, it would impact calendar, which is also on our agenda tonight. And I don't expect an answer on the spot. But one teacher did comment at the high school level, if, if they're teaching all four by fours, they're gonna start with a whole new group of 90 students. And is it possible to add one extra day in between the two semesters? And I just thought it was worth discussion here to see if that was, if there's any merit to that.
I'll, I'll leave that a little bit to the calendar committee. It's, I don't think it's abnormal, and, and Dr. Robertson, you can tell me if I'm incorrect here, but I don't think it's abnormal to have somewhat of a, a day imbalance from one semester to the next, or one turn, one nine weeks to the next. But I know we have options on the table around the calendar committee.
I mean, the explanation was that it would be a whole, potentially a whole new group of students, like the way you start each school year in September. So it, it was just something I made a note of.
Certainly between semesters. I think you'd want to look at the calendars first. And you remember, if you put, any day you pull to make an additional staff day is another instructional day, you've gotta find somewhere else, which means you're pulling from a holiday or somewhere else, so. Those are certainly discussable, but I think you'd want to look at the calendar, because this, different options. The semester's gonna break at different places, and that may address some of those challenges.
All right, it looks like, I also just want to know before we go ahead and vote, final call for questions.
Well, if I could just speak quickly, I'll be really quick, I know, I'm sorry we're getting ready to vote. But as somebody who has just had four kids go right, or three kids go right through the, our schools, our high schools, you know, just to talk to the scheduling process. I understand the student confusion, but I don't think it's unusual. You know, I mean, and so certainly relative to the four by four because of what we had to do in the pandemic. But I mean, just in general, the scheduling process, you know, you're asked to put down all these courses, and you don't necessarily get those courses, and then you gotta go back and you gotta reselect different things. And we've never asked kids to pick study blocks. That's never been part of our scheduling process. And so, you know, you go through that, and then you sit down, as Matt said, with your counselor, and then you, that's where you start to get the clarity of, well, here's how the courses are lining up for you in the master schedule. Do you still want to take this? Well, no, I don't want to take that, I'd rather take this, is that available? Yes, that's available. So I mean, I think it's really important to understand, it's, it's an ongoing, scheduling is an ongoing process. It's an ongoing process of communication with parents and students throughout the year. So it's not unusual to have a little bit of confusion with our students. And as we're switching over to a new system, we'll continue to make sure we communicate that very clearly.
All right, then, so the vote, the vote, the motion is to approve the, I'll rewrite off the screen, high school scheduling for plant, just high school scheduling, 2022-23?
Okay.
All in favor, show a raised hand, please. Oh, we didn't, no, I took, we took the motions before the discussion, okay. Ms. Felton, did you need to be added back into the queue?
No, I forgot to put my hand down, I would do that now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let her, she'll ask her next. Okay, Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Felton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. Ms. Holtz, how did you vote?
Mrs. Holtz.
Oh, okay, Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote, the motion did pass. Thank you. One final action item is our adjustment to schedule of meetings. Oh, I, yes. So we have Mrs. Hughes to thank for pointing out that one of the months turned out to be Mondays instead of Tuesdays. I believe it was, was it August, Mrs. Hughes? So, so our clerk, we thank our clerk for providing a corrected copy. And, and that's really the only reason it's on the agenda tonight, because it was previously approved. Yes, ma'am? Madam Chair, in light of the discussions that were had this evening, are we going to change the February 1st meeting? Well, the reason, oh, the reason, good, yes. While we're here. Mm-hmm. So we can offer wording to you, maybe we can rely on our attorney to do that.
I think what you're gonna have, originally, we had two special meetings for this, and, let me go back. Where's February, okay, February 1st meeting originally was a special meeting for the C E O, for the F Y 2022-23 and C I P, F Y 22-23 through F Y 27-28. The, the C E O presentation is now going to move to February 8th on the regular meeting. But you are gonna have that special meeting, because we were also gonna call a second special meeting. So now will be a special meeting for the purposes of meeting with outside counsel, and then an open meeting, a regular, a special meeting, open meeting at that point, I believe, to start at 5:00.
Yeah, right, the outside counsel's a closed session.
Right, closed session, it'll start the meeting at 3:00 to closed session. It will pick up an open session meeting, I believe we said 5:00 o'clock or approximately their time.
So I just need your help with, with what we should call it for the purpose of the calendar.
I think it's just a special meeting at this point, for the purpose of discussing the election district.
That's what I was looking for, thank you.
Not aware of anything else at this time. And just note that the C E O will now be part, the C E O presentation will now be part of the February 8th meeting.
The, the agenda, so it doesn't show up here separately. We, we should ask for a motion first before further discussion, motion to approve.
Ma'am, may I, before you do, we, we want to.
Well, just to open it up for discussion, we technically.
Before you do, we need to add and make an additional change. It's related to the, not to confuse things. I think you want to make sure you have the same number of opportunities for comment on the budget. So we would want to move the adoption of the budget away from March 1st and have that be a special meeting similar to February 15th, which would be budget C I P workshop and public hearing on the budget. And then March the 8th would be your adoption of the budget. It's a formal, regular meeting, we just add it to the action item. Now, according to Crystal, moving it back one week in March will be fine. Yeah, so the way this would read, just to go down the list, so February 1st special meeting, purpose of discussion of election districts. February 8th doesn't need to say anything, but for your information, that will be where we present the estimate of needs. February 15th will look the same, it's a special meeting on the budget, public hearing. February 22nd's gonna look the same, you'll have an opportunity for public input on the budget at that meeting. I'm suggesting March 1st special meeting look the same as the February 15th special meeting, which is another budget workshop and public hearing on the budget prior to what would be then an adoption as an action item on March the 8th. If that works for you all, I just want to have that clarity before you make a motion, so you know what you're making a motion on.
Does anybody need us to go through that again? Even though we're not voting yet, but just for the, we'll take the motion now, and then if people need clarity, we'll ask, how's that?
Well, I was just gonna suggest, I, have we just, are we gonna have another close tonight? Since we've been here since 2:30, I know there was talk about moving that to the next meeting.
I think Dr. Spence has agreed that it won't take too, that we can do this tonight. And I think we, we will still plan to. We're just about done with this meeting, okay.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't be able to do it next week, since we're removing some other stuff out of next week's?
Not moving out of, we can extend the time we are here next week, if that's what you're asking. But this has been put off already, but colleagues, do you feel prepared tonight to discuss the evaluation? Or do you prefer to be next week and, and Dr. Spence?
I, I can go either way.
Okay, so then, yes.
I know I'm not there this evening, but every, every time we have important business to take care of, we have board members that complain about the length of time we, we stay at these meetings. This is our job, this is our duty to the citizens, we have work to do, and I'm sorry, I'm not there to participate. But many of us do not complain about the time that we have to stay, and this is important. And I suggest that you stay and get it done.
It's not that late. It's not like it's, you know, 1:00 in the morning, like we've done before. This is, it's 9:00, not that late.
Well, let's just, I mean, a show of hands of who, who want, who agree, who would like to do the evaluation tonight? And the other option is next week, just to get a feel for, not a formal vote, but who's up for doing it tonight? Kind of split then. Well, six, 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 six or seven are willing to, to do it tonight.
And I just have another comment just on general about the calendars. I mean, there are those of us who have jobs, this is not our full-time job, and we have to get up in the morning. We, we started this meeting at 2:30 today, which is, I mean, in the, you know, prior to COVID, we need to get back to what our meetings used to be like. We start at 4:00 and we end at 9:00, was approximately what it used to be. We, we can't continue these long hours with staff, staff has to get up early, they are burning the candle at both ends. They have to stay here as long as we. We, we can't continue these long hours with staff. Staff has to get up early. They are burning the candle at both ends. They have to stay here as long as we have to stay here. I'm not opposed to doing, I, I'm ready. I, I can do this closed session tonight. But it, this just is a pattern. We're starting earlier, we're staying later and we have jobs, we have families. Staff has families. They have to get up early. Um, the public's watching us as well. They need to get to bed. So I, I would just like the board to consider this and we need to run our meetings a little bit more efficiently so that we're not burning the candle at both ends.
I feel there was a lot of important business that was covered today. I mean, I, I will just leave it at that. Okay. So we are taking a motion to, to reaffirm this calendar with the new, with the adjustments as noted tonight. Is there a motion? Mrs. Anderson, a second. Mrs. Franklin, and does anybody again need any clarity before we vote on what was already presented by Mrs. Lynetti and Mr. Dr. Spence? Uh, so then all in favor, and our online, uh, colleagues, you know what you're voting on, the adjusted dates for February and March?
Yes.
Okay. All right then, all in favor, please show a raised hand.
Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Felton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote. The motion did pass.
All right, thank you. Now we have our committee or liaison reports. So let's get through this with whoever has anything to share, committee or board liaison reports. Mrs., we'll start with Mrs. Manning.
So 403B, um, committee met last week. Um, there were some, uh, funds that were underperforming and we were asked to replace those funds. So we did, um, replace three of the investment funds. Uh, will take a few months for those to go into effect and employees will be notified and, um, they'll reach out with communications on what those funds are. If you have any specific questions, you can reach out to Ms. Pate.
Do, do, do you mind just giving a, a, a real quick, a two or three sentence, uh, reminder and for the public too on what this committee is?
Um, so it's a, it's, it's kind of an oversight committee for our investments, uh, for the 403B plans. Um, so we monitor the funds and, um, there were three that were underperforming and not getting the best value for our employees out of their money. Um, so the company that helps us, helps provide oversight had made some recommendations to us to replace three of those funds and we've, we've met several times. Uh, but this, this last week, we vote, we met and we voted to replace those funds.
And you, you are our, our board member on the committee of about a dozen, is it?
Yeah, this is combined with city as well. Yes, it's, uh, uh, 10 maybe total voting members.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, um, Chair, I.
Yes, Mrs. Felton.
I could just speak briefly about the, um, Virginia School Board Association Capitol Conference that took place on, um, Monday and Tuesday. Long, long two days. Uh, I just briefly say that we were met and we were honored to have the, um, Honorable Amy Rostov-Gerita, uh, the Secretary of Education and the Honorable, um, Watson Sears Lieutenant Governor and the Honorable Julia, uh, Bello, Virginia Superintendent of Public Education. They visited our, um, meeting, gave out good information. Um, if you are so inclined, um, go on, uh, the VSBA website and you can get the full meeting, uh, the full, um, essence of the sessions that went on, uh, these last two days. Also, I had the opportunity to go up to Capitol Hill or, uh, to meet with at least seven of our delegates on today. And that was an exhausting time, but it was really, um, fruitful and very informative. So any, any other question that need to be asked, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. We do look forward to hearing more and safe travels back.
Thank you so much.
Uh, we have a point of information real quick to, to remind people because I almost forgot myself, but our economic interest forms are due by February 1st.
Thank you.
Um, so I don't want to leave here without giving mine to Regina before we leave tonight.
Thank you. That was on my amid matters list and it didn't make it. So thank you, Mrs. Anderson, for that reminder. All right then, Mrs. Anderson, uh, so the, this concludes the formal meeting agenda, uh, with the, and what, what we have left is a closed session, so.
So, uh, can we, before I read this, should I just stop at the number one? Because we, we took care of the other.
Yeah, I'm going to say we're not continuing any of the other ones, so just the first one.
I move that the school board recessed into closed session in accordance with the exemptions to open meetings. Open meeting laws set forth in Code of Virginia 2.2, best, dash, 3711, Part A, Paragraphs 1, 7, and 8 as amended. A1, Discussion, Consideration, or Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment, Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance Demotion, Salaries Disciplining, or Resignation of Specific Public Officers, Appointees, or Employees of Any Public Body, namely to discuss, not, number one, the Superintendent's Mid-Year Evaluation and Related Matters. I just need a second.
Missa.
Whatever. Second.
Okay, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Sorry, Madam Chair, who did the first?
I, I did. Because I read it. I said, I, I move.
Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. We can go into close.
On this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the... ...Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia... ...requires... ...the...